Braswell, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. We are now in open session. Certification of closed meeting. Whereas the Spotsylvania County School Board has convened a closed meeting on this day pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. And whereas Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the School Board that such a closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore be it resolved that the Spotsylvania County School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under this chapter. And only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting.
I move to certify.
Motion to certify by Mr. Braswell.
I will second.
Second by Mr. Twig. Roll call votes starting with Ms. Shelley.
Shelley, aye.
Meyer, aye.
Phelps, aye.
Braswell, aye.
Twig, aye.
Blaine, aye.
Gramp, aye.
Items from closed session, Dr. Martin.
We have two motions. First motion is that the Board accepts the recommendations of the Superintendent for personnel appointments, assignments, transfers, the reclassification of a position, the request to rescind a resignation, resignation, the request for extended leave of absence for the 2018-2019 school year, and retirement as presented in closed meeting and permitted by Section 2.2-3711A1 of the Code of Virginia.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Motion by Dr. Meyer, second by Ms. Shelley. Any discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Dr. Martin.
Second motion is that upon consideration of the claim submitted to the Spotsylvania County School Board by Akin Inc., the Board moves to deny the claim as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to deny a claim by Ms. Shelley, second by Dr. Meyer. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. And that brings us to item 5.01. We are now in recess until 6:30. This evening, all members are in attendance. Can we have a motion to approve the revised agenda from Monday night, last Monday night? Motion by Ms. Shelley.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Phelps. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Dr. Meyer, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please? Please stand.
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And that brings us to item 11.07, Skills USA Conference. Mrs. Finnart.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Board, Dr. Baker and Dr. Martin. On April 21st and April 20th, eighteen students from the Spotsylvania Career and Technical Center attended the Skills USA Virginia State Leadership Conference in Virginia Beach. These students competed in contests in their areas of work that they are preparing to enter once they complete their education. Eight of the eighteen competitors earned medals and placed in the top three of their contest area. Four students earned gold medals for placing first in their contest. And tonight, we will recognize the four gold medal winners. If you would please come forward as I call your name. Unfortunately, the first recipient is unable to be with us this evening. His name is Thomas Glub for extemporaneous writing. Kellum Ezell for Technical Computer Applications, teacher Steve Tate. Chris Godey and Zach Kramer for Urban Search and Rescue Robotics, teacher Tim McClellan. Also of note, Chris, Zach, and Kellum will be advancing to the Skills USA National Leadership and Skills Conference in Louisville, Kentucky in June. Congratulations to all of you on this accomplishment. Thank you to the teachers for their support and good luck in Nationals. If we have family and friends that are here to support our students, if you could also
Thank you. Congratulations. Moving on to 11.08, V S B A Art Contest Winners.
Local School Board members were treated to an impressive display of creativity and faced some tough decisions in selecting the 2018 winners of the Virginia School Board Association, V S B A Regional Art Contest this spring. The V S B A Regional Art Contest was started in 1989 to promote artistic talents of Virginia's public school students. For each of the nine V S B A regions, a winner is chosen for elementary, middle, and high school levels. Student art from the elementary, middle, and high school levels represented each school division in the competition, which was judged at a regional form for area School Board members. We are so proud to report that we had winners at every level. If you could please come forward when your name is called. Elementary Regional First Place Winner, Alessandra Dixon, fifth grade Salem Elementary At the middle school level, the Middle School Regional First Place Winner, Denisea Davis, eighth grade Freedom Middle School Art Teacher, Andrew Beckers. At the high school level, we have Calista Reichen, twelfth grade Massaponics High School Art Teacher, Elizabeth Carter Corbin. Congratulations to this year's Spotsylvania County Virginia School Board Association Art Contest winners and their teachers. The first place art will be framed and displayed in the offices of the V S B A in Charlottesville and the Richmond offices of the State Superintendent of Public Instruction for one year.
If we have any family and friends that are here to support our young artists, if you could stand to be recognized, please?
Congratulations to our artists, but I want to mention, our artists in Spotsylvania are always, every year, we have students that are first or second place in the region. So that just says wonders about our student artists. Thank you so much. Moving on to 11.09, 2018 Division Chess Tournament Winners.
Thank you. This year, the chess tournament was held at Post Oak Middle School. There were 144 participants. And many thanks to the tournament coordinator, Mike Cornell, and to the MVP trophies that were donated and the medals, for the medals and the trophies. At the high school level, the individual first place, Daniel Whitley, Massaponics High Third place for high school individual, Sophia Elia, Cortland High School. The team for high school is first place Riverbend High School, and the team members were, if you could please come forward as your name is called, Jalen Suber, Braden Smith, Karik Proctor, and Kenji Epling. Middle school at the individual level, first place Samantha Ho, Thornburg Middle. Is Samantha here this evening? And third place from Post Oak Middle School, John Ed Benton. And the team for middle school goes to Thornburg Middle School, and those team members include Samantha Ho, Zachary Craddock, Grant DeVry, and Andrew Stone. At the elementary level for fourth through fifth individual, first place Devon Janai, And third place from Smith Station Elementary, Xavier Hagie. And the overall team for fourth through fifth goes to Smith Station Elementary, and the team members were Xavier Hagie, Michael Mead, Ryan Cantwell, and Tristan Hanks. And we do even have individuals for K through three elementary. For first place, we have Jack Supon, Robert E. Lee Elementary School. And second place to Lucas Chow at Spotswood Elementary School. And I do believe we have Mike Cornell in the audience. If you could give a shout out to us, so at least come up to be acknowledged for all of
Thank you and congratulations. Mr. Cornell, thank you so much for all your work. 1110, Sedexo Future Chef Competition Winners.
Thank you. This year, the Future Chef Competition was open to all fourth and fifth grade students within our school division. Ninety-seven students submitted recipes. After all the recipes were reviewed, five finalists faced off in the final competition, and finalists prepared creative dishes like egg roll spaghetti, lettuce wraps, sweet and sour burgers, and veggie tacos. Students prepared their recipe and explained the healthy ingredients to the taste testing judges. The first place winner, Isaac Martinez of Robert E. Lee, moved on to the regional level of the Sedexo Future Chef Competition, where his recipe was one of forty competitors. And we're going to congratulate all of our top five winners this evening. Our first place, unfortunately, Isaac Martinez is not with us this evening. Our second place winner is present, and it's Bebe Blaylock, Healthy Lettuce Wraps from Our third place winner, Jenna Baines, Sweet and Sour Asian Fusion Burger from Lee Hill Our fourth place winner, Jocelyn Wright's Asian Fusion Veggie Tacos from Livingston And our fifth place winner, Erin Kirkpatrick, who created Egg Roll Spaghetti from Battlefield
Thank you. Congratulations. Moving on to 11.11, DECA International Career Development Conference Top Ten World Winners.
Thank you. We are pleased to share that Cortland High School students Megan Gates and Cameron Buzzel and the Riverbend students Elizabeth Muller and Kennedy Horn wrote a thirty-page manual on their school store, and each school was awarded a DECA Gold Level Status. This Gold Level Status enabled them to compete with one hundred and seventy-five teams from around the world at the DECA International Career Development Conference in Atlanta, Georgia. This year's topic for the presentation was market research. Both teams placed in the top twenty for their presentations, and they went on to compete in finals and placed in the top ten for the world. This elite honor is quite an accomplishment, but to have two teams from the same county to receive this level of success is really remarkable. Congratulations, and if they are here with us this evening, if they could come forward
I agree. Mrs. Pins, if you'd join us for a picture as well? If we have any family and friends here to support, could you please stand to be recognized
Congratulations. Moving to 1112, 2018 All-State Foundation V H S L Achievement Awards.
Thank you. We are honored to share that a committee of athletic directors, media representatives, and V H S L staff was selected, has selected two Cortland High School seniors to receive one of their nineteen, 2018, the All-State Foundation V H S L Achievement Award scholarships. Kelsey Jones, if you're here, Kelsey, could you please come forward, is being recognized for the Class Four Female Athlete of the Year. And Sarah Johnson, if you're here, could you please come forward, is being recognized for the Class Four Academic Activity Award. The selection committee reviewed over two hundred nominations. Each candidate for these awards was deserving in a unique and special way, but the committee narrowed the field to nineteen outstanding participants in V H S L Athletic and Activity Programs, students who represent the very best of Virginia's graduating seniors. Congratulations, Kelsey and Sarah, for being selected for this distinct honor.
If their family and friends could also stand to be recognized, please?
Congratulations, girls. 1113, Superintendent's Student Advisory Committee, Stand. Students Taking a New Direction.
Stand. Students Taking Action for a New Direction is the Superintendent's Student Advisory Committee. This committee was established as an outgrowth of the Superintendent's schools' visits and meetings with students. The purpose of the committee is to promote student leadership and to allow students the opportunity to advocate for their peers. The committee serves as a means of enhancing collaboration and communication at all levels, using the student needs and their experiences as drivers relative to continuous improvement in educational services. The participating students are keeping their perspective and their voices at the forefront at a time of potential change and accountability at the state and the federal levels. Each middle school and high school has two student representatives, which reflect the diverse composition of Spotsylvania County Public Schools' student body and serving on this committee. As we call your name, if you could please come forward. From Battlefield Middle School, Dominique Lucas and Ashley Lamanza. From Chancellor Middle School, Enya Say Levin and Douglas Recor. From Freedom Middle School, Nasir Smith and Reagan Bestick. From Nye River Middle School, David Wang, Kaylee Henry. From Post Oak Middle School, Catherine Sale and Cameron Oliver. From Spotsylvania Middle School, Ethan Jones and Jordan Creel. From Thornburg Middle School, Nolan Brewster and Kyle Haas. From Chancellor High School, Brandon Johnson and Sandra Eskamila Amaya. From Cortland High School, Josiah Bird, Allison Morgan. From Massaponics High School, Gloria Benetez Diaz and Jasmine Johnson. From Riverbend High School, Sarah Young and Johnny Bailey. And from Spotsylvania High School, Daniel Ferguson and Valerie Lampert. Your contributions, feedback, and suggestions have been insightful and will help guide our upcoming strategic plan. Thank you for serving on this year's Stand Advisory Committee.
And if our families could please stand to be recognized as well?
Thank you all for your support and helping out around, in the school division. Stand. Moving to 11.14, recognitions of the 2018 Division New Teachers of the Year, Division Mentor Teacher of the Year, and Division Teacher of the Year.
Good evening. Each year, Spotsylvania County Public Schools participates in the Teacher of the Year Program coordinated statewide through the Virginia Department of Education. All public and accredited non-public schools are able to participate in the Virginia Teacher of the Year Program to honor teachers who represent the best in teaching in Spotsylvania County Public Schools, the Commonwealth of Virginia, and across the nation. For more than forty years, Virginia has participated in the National Teacher of the Year Program, a project of the Council of Chief State School Officers. The program is open to all teachers in pre-kindergarten through grade twelve who possess a current renewable Virginia Teaching License, including school librarians, school counselors, and reading specialists. The Office of Human Resources is pleased to have coordinated this process with our site principals. And from this group of thirty-one nominees, the 2018 Division Teacher of the Year was chosen by a committee of former winners and other division leaders and was recently announced at the Spotsylvania Education Foundation Sage Banquet. This evening, we will recognize the Division Teacher of the Year as well as our Division New Mentor Teachers of the Year and new and mentor teachers of the year at each grade level. When I call your name, please come forward to be recognized. The 2018 Division Teacher of the Year, Michelle Sanders, Battlefield Middle School. Our Division New Teachers of the Year, representing the elementary level, Erin Hughes from Riverview Ms. Hughes was also selected as this year's McTeacher of the Year for Spotsylvania County. New Teacher of the Year, representing our middle school level, Joseph Smith from Spotsylvania Representing our high schools, Teacher of the Year from Massaponics, Hannah Harkness. At this time, we will recognize our Division Mentor Teachers of the Year, coming from Cedar And our Mentor Teacher of the Year from the high school, representing Riverbend High, Virginia Jenny Greenlaw. Again, we congratulate each of you all for a distinct honor, and we appreciate your dedication and commitment to our students. Congratulations.
May I say something?
Mr. Blaine.
As you teachers leave, I'd just like to relay one comment. Over the last few days, I've had an opportunity to sit down and talk extensively with a young lady who's a sophomore in one of our schools. And I was asking her, what is it that she likes best about our school? She thought for a couple of minutes, and she said, you know, Mr. Blaine, it's the teachers. And I couldn't help but feel what a nice compliment for our teachers to be recognized by a student, incidentally, when asked, what do you really know about our school and appreciate? So I thought you'd all enjoy that comment.
That brings us to item 12.01, Public Comments. Dr. Martin.
Good evening. The Public Comments segment of our board meetings is a time to receive recommendations, suggestions, concerns, and comments from the general public. Each speaker's allotted five minutes, and we ask that they clearly state the name, address, and/or voting district for the board. A speaker may request additional time should the board, should once five-minute allotment expire. We ask that you keep your comments focused on the issues and that all speakers maintain a love of decorum and mutual respect for one another. Our first speaker is Wanda Stroh.
Hello, I am Wanda Stroh. I live in the Livingston District on Nye River Drive. I have six children. They have gone through the school system around here. Presently, I have three at Spotsylvania High School, one at Post Oak Middle, and one at Robert E. Lee. I just wanted to come here and say thank you to the previous calendar committee for all of the effort that they put and all of the hard work and the research that they did. (end of transcript) all of the effort that they put and all of the hard work and the research that they did in putting forward a wonderful calendar, instructional calendar, for the next year to come. And I also wanted to thank the invitation to the calendar committee this year that I am part of, and I feel grateful and I feel excited. We're all working very hard, and as I sit through my children's games and different activities at the school, I hear positive things. There's a little bit of apprehension, but we change. There's always apprehension. But I just wanted to say thank you because it is very important to our kids to have a good calendar that they can rely upon. And me as a parent, I'm very thankful that our voices are being heard, and we are part of something so important for our children. So that's all that I wanted to say. Thank you so much, and we look forward to bringing something to the board soon that can be approved, and we can continue with the great next few years. Thank you so much.
Madam Chair, that's all the speakers that signed up.
Is there anybody that wishes to speak that did not sign up? You can be next.
Hi, my name is April Gillespie. I live in the Berkeley District. My address is 3651 Shirley's Hill Road. And I am coming tonight to speak on a couple of different things. One would be the School Board Advisory Committee, the Calendar Committee. I think that there needs to be more transparency for the parents. They should be able to get more involved, not just a group of five or ten parents and then the rest, school employees. I think we have about twenty-five thousand children here in Spotsylvania County. That's a lot of parents. So I'm sure there's a lot of parents that would like to get involved. The community shouldn't be told they are welcome to come to these committee meetings, but have to sit in a separate area, and they're not permitted to speak. For instance, the School Board Advisory Committee. Parent involvement should be encouraged. Parents are the greatest educators that children have. We're the ones that teach them how to tie their shoes. We're the ones that, you know, give them their solid structure before they even get to school. So I think that we should have, that our opinions should be very heavily weighed. So more parent involvement, I would recommend that. I, along with others, are being told that the administration is not aware of the various incidents happening at different schools across the county. It's been said, "We do not have a bullying problem." We parents have been coming here speaking out about our children's encounters with bullying for months. You have been sent countless emails from parents reaching out for help. The administration wants to address each problem individually instead of facing the monster head-on. Go by the Student Code of Conduct. That's it. Go by that. It's created for a purpose. It worked when my parents went to school. It worked when I was in school, and it will work for this generation and the generations to come. I know that when I was a child and when I would go to grandma's house, the things that I did at home were not acceptable at grandma's house, and that's just how it worked. Didn't matter whether my mom or dad liked it or not. And that's, you have a set of rules for school, you have a set of rules for home, for grandma's house, for auntie's house. In school, certain things should not be permitted, should not be acceptable, and per the Student Code of Conduct, it's not. But yet, it's continuing. According to the administration, the Code of Conduct doesn't work for every child. But yet, we teach every child to take the same test and expect them to pass it. Kind of sounds double standard to me. When will our calls for help be addressed? That's what I want to know. That's what hundreds of parents are wanting to know. When are our voices going to be heard? When are we going to stop speaking on deaf ears? Is it going to take the system imploding on itself? Or, God forbid, children being murdered? It's on the news every single day. It's coming. And I'm, we've been coming here and telling you. We've been warning you, it's coming. And throwing an SRO in every school is not going to help. Just in Santa Fe a couple of days ago, there was two SROs that were pointed to that school. And it happened there. It's not, you know, putting, having an SRO in every school or metal detectors is not going to stop the problem. It's not going to stop it. The problem is within the walls of our schools already. It's already in there. Get rid of the MOU and exercise the Student Code of Conduct. That's what we can do to protect our kids. That's the only thing we can do. I pray every single day before I take and put my kids on the bus, every day, just praying that they'll make it home okay. Praying that everything will be okay. And I know a lot of parents that do the same thing. We should not have to be doing that at all. Please do something. Please help us. Please, for the sake of our kids.
Good evening, all. My name is Catherine Palmer. I live in the Lee Hill District. I have to preface my remarks by saying I actually wrote them for last week, but as you know, we had a little storm blow through, and I kind of took it as a cooldown week, but I decided that if online bullies can't keep me from coming here, then a little mini durachio is not going to stop me either. So here I am. I also want to thank Mr. Braswell before I start for speaking out about the things that I'm about to address. I really appreciate your willingness to be a voice for the truth in this. So just some thoughts. During a recent supervisors' meeting, many public speakers implored the board to use their power to effect change around a particular situation. Supervisor Yakubowski rightly pointed out that as individuals, they actually don't have power to intervene with specific county agencies. Individual board members do not have power. Often, the board as a whole doesn't have the kind of power that many unhappy constituents would like them to exercise. And what power a board has must be exercised as a group, not as individuals. So that Board of Supervisors exchange and the development over the past few weeks of a false narrative around the school's budget presentation got me to thinking about power, influence, and responsibility. As individual board members, you do have influence. You have influence through your comments on the dais, through your questions, through your presence in our community, through your presence on social media if you use it, and the conversations you have every day. You also have responsibility. I believe you have a responsibility to represent the schools to our community. It is your job to understand policy and the budget, and if you do your job well, you also help constituents understand how these things work. Taxpayers pay you $1,000 a month to take the time to understand things like our budget. And yes, it is your job to question school staff when needed, but it's also your job to make decisions based in fact and to defend those decisions that you make, and if necessary, own up to mistakes. A few weeks ago, you enthusiastically endorsed the decision to move non-teachers from a 2% raise to a 4% raise. You did this, I'm assuming, because you understood that this was not included in the original budget, but through diligence on the part of school staff, was freed up within that underfunded budget through an employee-by-employee analysis of the actual impact of COLAs, raises, and bring-to-minimum increases. You knew that despite not receiving all funds requested from the county, you could take a chance and stretch that budget to give non-teachers a better deal, just as many, many of your constituents had requested. Since then, a few members of the public and even some members of the Board of Supervisors have created this false narrative suggesting that the amount, quote, "found to cover these raises" was $800,000, and that this is somehow an indication of poor accounting on the part of the schools. This is flat-out false, and I hope the staff will have the chance to address that directly with the supervisors later this week. I know this is false because I've been paying attention. I've been watching presentations. I've been reading. As the school board, I think your role in this conversation is pretty straightforward. You should be doing what you can to help the public understand the truth of the situation, as Mr. Braswell did this week. Whether you do it tonight during comments, or through social media, or on whatever platform you see fit, your school staff are being attacked unjustly, and it's your job to stand up for the organization that you're part of when the attacks are untrue, unjust, and wholly unhelpful. You have influence. Mrs. Phelps, you are my Lee Hill School Board representative. You are also David Ross's Cortland appointee to the Citizen Budget Review Committee. I assume this means that he trusts your judgment, and you should feel comfortable enough with him to address this misinformation and to encourage him to avoid sowing seeds of doubt based on cherry-picked irrelevant information. I think you have influence there. You also have the ear and support of the anonymous Facebook group, Spotsylvania Parents for Education. They enthusiastically endorse you for this role. This group is sharing this false narrative with thousands of followers and bashing our schools. I ask you to use your influence to set the record straight. Help them to understand there was never $800,000 to be found. Help them to understand that the reason that none of the school board members up there questioned this switch was because you had been paying close attention, you understood how the money became available, and you, along with your colleagues on the board, enthusiastically supported the change. There's a great quote in one of the Harry Potter books that I think fits perfectly here. "There are all kinds of courage. It takes a great deal of bravery to stand up to our enemies, but just as much to stand up to our friends." I hope that all of you can be brave, represent your constituents, and stand up for your schools. Thank you for your time.
Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to address the board? Seeing none, that brings us to item 13, Special Reports. We'll start with 13.01, Board Committee Reports. Does anybody have a Board Committee report? Mrs. Phelps.
I'm part of the Calendar Committee, and I just wanted to let the public know that we did have two meetings to discuss and formulate the upcoming school calendar. It looks like the final Calendar Committee meeting will be on May 29, 2018, at four o'clock here in this room, and then moves forward before this board to be voted on, and that's all I have to share.
And to be clear, that's the 1920 calendar, correct?
That's not a decision that's made yet, whether it's one year or two years.
Well, but 1819 has already been approved.
1819 is already approved. It's either 19, 20, or 20 and 21, or just 19 and 20. They haven't made up their decision. Thank you.
Dr. Martin.
Just real quickly, the Fleet Service Steering Committee is meeting this Thursday, and one of the items that we are looking at is how we can assist the county in the disposal of surplus vehicles in an expeditious manner, and that process we are working through. Also, as a VSBA Board of Directors at Large member, I attended the Eastern Regional Meeting in Colonial Beach, which discussed creating pathways for career and technical programs. And it was very interesting how the focus from the community college folks is trying to help school divisions create pathways for career and technical students, and I thought it was very enlightening. And the second regional meeting was South Side, and it was interesting, that one focused on addressing mental health needs of students in a presentation by Chesterfield County Schools as to how they look at emotional, social, health, or education program. And it'd be interesting, it's going to tie in, I think, with what we're going to hear later this evening. At least, I'm anticipating that's going to be the, kind of, the focus. So those last two meetings that I attended as an at-large member were very, very informative, and I thank you.
Ms. Shelley.
Thank you, Ms. Grant. I attended, last week, we had the Food Task Force, and we heard from Sidexo, and they gave us the number of lunches, breakfasts and lunches that are served as going up every year, and it's pretty much going up almost every month. So we are having more meals served to our students. That means more students are actually buying lunch from our cafeterias. Also, our negative account balance is steadily being reduced, so we have people paying for their lunch balances, so it's going down in every level. And then, there was, I had asked for a report on the Community Eligibility Program. What that is, is the Community Eligibility Program is a program where schools that have a very high number of students who are economically disadvantaged, the entire school can qualify for free lunch, not just the students who are economically disadvantaged, but the entire school. The program is, you have to have a very high percentage of students that are eligible for that, to be qualified. While there are a couple of schools in Fredericksburg City, so our, we did have a committee that went to, went to Hugh Mercer Lower Elementary School to get some information about how it works there. And they came back with good information, but it is not something that would work in our division because our division is so much larger than Fredericksburg. But it is, it is, I'm just, I'm very thankful for the leaders of our food services to be able to just go out and kind of indulge me, and which in fact would indulge this whole board by seeing if we can help support our students. So I do want to thank the people who did go out to Hugh Mercer to check out the program.
Are there any other Board Committee reports? That brings us to 13.02, the Social Worker Team Raising Mental Health Awareness. Mrs. Richardson.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Baker and Dr. Martin. Since 1949, May has been recognized as Mental Health Awareness Month. This evening, we have Mrs. Robin Schrader and Mrs. Michelle Swisher, members of our school social work team, that will be sharing data about mental health, resilience, and the impact to our schools and community.
Thank you so much. We hope you have the opportunity to take a look of the boards that are over here on the side. We had an activity done this month with school social workers and school counselors to ask students three specific questions. They asked, "What are three things you can do to improve your mental health? What do you think of when people say mental health? And finally, how does your school help you feel good about yourself?" Over the course of your life, if you experience a mental health problem, your thinking, mood, and behavior can all be affected. Many factors contribute to mental health problems, including biological, life experiences such as trauma, and family history of mental health. I think it's important to know some of the statistics that are encountered with mental health conditions, that 50% of adults, at some point in their life, will develop a mental health disorder, along with that mental health concerns account for the third most common reason for hospitalizations for folks between the ages of 18 and 44. And one in five children currently or at some point will have a serious debilitating mental health illness. I think it's also important to remember that the adolescent brain continues to develop all the way till the age of 25. That's important information. There has been an increase of youth experiencing severe depression, and you can see the statistic from 5.9 in 2012 to 8.2 in 2015. And I'm not going to read all of the national prevalence, but I do think it's important to know that 71% of children are exposed to violence every year. And these things can impact the mental health conditions of folks. And there's 94% of children who are in the juvenile justice system have experienced a trauma in their life. In Virginia alone, there's some statistics here, and one of these slides has changed drastically. In Spotsylvania, we currently have 167 children that are in foster care. And Virginia, in Spotsylvania alone, right now is the fourth-leading county of children born addicted to opiates, as provided by the Community Services Board. So what do we want to work to... So what do we want to work towards? It's resilience. That's where we want to work towards, with working with students. And resilience refers to the individual's ability to cope with adversity and adapt to challenges or changes. It's something we can learn, and something that we can grow in our children. Resiliency is feeling connected to a caring community and family, self-regulation skills, having a positive view of yourself, and motivation to be effective in your environment. So how do we build resiliency? It's by establishing connections, helping others, having routines, teaching self-care, nurturing a positive self-view, and teaching social-emotional skills. How do we do that in an educational setting? First and foremost, we must develop and recognize the early signs of stress and connect people to resources. We must develop a trusting relationship and provide support to students and their families. As educators and service providers, we must be good neighbors, and we must look out and point out strengths that our students have.
So, in order to identify ways to build resiliency, we need to understand how to level the playing field for our students, how to balance the scale for them, given everything that they're dealing with. Research says that they've identified a common set of factors that predispose children to positive outcomes in the face of significant.
Would you speak into the microphone?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Pardon me. To positive outcomes in the face of significant adversity, these protective factors, I like to call them, that's sort of more of a mental health term for me, these protective factors help to negate the impact of risk factors for our kids. Mental health is a risk factor, environment is a risk factor, there's many risk factors. So you can see on the slide, a few of those. So the five that we like to look at are supportive adult-child relationship, building a sense of self-efficacy, perceived control, they need to feel like they have some control in their life, providing opportunities to strengthen their adaptive skills and their self-regulatory skills and capacity, and mobilizing sources of faith, hope, cultural traditions within their families. ACES, you guys have heard us talk about ACES before. I think we've spoken about them probably the last two years, during May, at least. So I'm not going to go into all the details about ACES, but just to kind of summarize that, ACES came out of, it's a study that came out of Walla Walla, Washington, and as a reminder, this study looked at the effects of adverse childhood experiences, and they looked at it as it's a public health concern, you know? And the thing to remember about them is there's a cumulative effect, or a stacking effect that happens with ACES. Okay, so why is this important? Well, almost two-thirds of the adults participating in the ACES study reported at least one ACE on the study. Most do report one or more out of those adverse childhood experiences. This is especially important, because like I talked before, there's sort of that dose response, or that cumulative effect that happens. The more ACES you experience, the worse the outcomes can be. So, the impact across domains is extremely important to be aware. It's not just one economic class. It goes across all socioeconomic statuses, all cultures, all races, it affects everyone. Okay, so what are we doing? We're doing a lot. The schools are doing a lot. The school counselors are doing a lot. The school psychologists are doing a lot. The school social work team is doing a lot. Here's just some things that we wanted to share with you on what we're doing. We're really moving towards trauma-informed schools training. There's been a big, huge training for our entire district this year. We've done two out of the three days so far. We're practicing mindfulness, teaching mindfulness. There's programs in schools, there's classrooms doing mindfulness. We're seeing a lot of positive results with that with kids and reducing their stress, mentoring, environmental accommodation, supporting our families, specialized groups, collaboration within the school community and within the mental health community outside of our school system. We are a team of, how many social workers total? I think we have 22 of us currently. 14 of us are licensed clinical social workers, which means we are, that more clinical mental health training is involved. We are doing aftercare meetings for our students that come out of the hospital who've been hospitalized for depression or other things. We're meeting with those families. We're working with those students and within our school and our teachers to try to help support them. We're making individual plans for them on how to reengage in school and how to prevent future hospitalizations for them. So you can read some of that, the rest of it, but I think one of the last important things on this slide that I want to show is that ecological systems of support to address the whole child and enhance learning. It's probably one of my favorite on the list, only because I think we're social workers. So that's kind of one of our big tenets, is working with the person and environment, and looking at their interconnectedness to everyone around them, all the systems, a systems theory approach. While the ideology of mental health is different for every student, there's multiple factors as to why people develop mental health conditions. One of the important things to remember is how do we manage that? What do we do? We know that number one, nurturing and positive relationships with people are the key to increasing the coping skills to gain mentally healthy children, and adolescents, and ultimately mentally healthy adults. Being trauma-informed, building resiliency, addressing mental health needs, all come back to this, nurturing positive relationships. Safe, stable, nurturing relationships. We help build those in our schools by providing a culture of safety and stability. A lot of our students don't have stability, and even if you do, you can still experience mental health concerns. This does not mean that we don't have accountability for our students. We provide safe, free from harm, consistency. We need to be there for our students regularly, and be compassionate, and be responsive. In the last slide, I just wanted to highlight something that Riverbend High School is doing. They have a Beacon Club. Unfortunately, the young lady who was here to speak last week had another commitment tonight, and she couldn't be here. But we just wanted to kind of let you guys know that this is a student-run, mental health club that was developed and run by students, for students. They bring in speakers for mental health. They're really trying to make a difference in their community. So we thank you very much for your time.
Any questions or comments? Mr. Braswell.
I just have a few comments. I want to thank you for your presentation, and I want to make notice that this is just one piece to a puzzle in order to help and nurture all of our children in this arena. It's all about integration, and so I thank you for, you know, representing your piece of the greater issues that we have within our school division, and that we, in order to solve that in a responsive way, a responsible way, it requires integration and the impact that you have, from your presentation, have given today. I want to thank you for doing it in a very informative and responsible way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Meyer.
Ladies, thank you. It does tie in very closely with the presentation that I heard, you know, for the South Side Regional Meeting, when they talked about social-emotional learning. And I think it also helps, what you are doing is what they were doing in Chesterfield, explaining as approach, is how best we create a secure and safe environment for our students, because we have to address those social-emotional needs. Mental health is something that we had not focused on in the past, but we are more and more today. We hear more about it, we hear about the importance of it, and the trauma and everything that, you know, students are going through that some of us don't experience, some of us do. So for those who don't, we don't know really what they're going through. You know, we always have difficulty then understanding where the other person is coming from. But I think, you know, as much as we are emphasizing the work with, as we work with our sheriff's office, and on the physical side of having a presence, but as we have our SROs in our schools, and those men and women in uniform being able to interact with our students and create a sense of stability, safety, security, and working on the mental health side, and that, as was just mentioned, all those factors play into how we develop a more secure and safe environment. And truly do appreciate all the work that you're doing in working with our students as they come from varied and different backgrounds. Thank you.
Mr. Twigg.
What role do you folks play, working with principals and code of conduct for the problem children, you know, bullying, cause trouble, get in trouble, et cetera?
I can speak for myself. I work very closely with the administrative staff at Massaponics High School for students. I have a very close working relationship with every AP, as well as the principal, in working with students that are having behavioral concerns in our school setting. There are discussions going on about kids. Kids still have consequences. But at the same time, we're also having those discussions about what's going on for this specific child? What does this child need? Why is this behavior happening? Is it mental health? Is it behavior? Is it environment? Is it a combination of things? And we're working to work with those students, whether that's individually, or working to hook them up with services in our community, working for services for a parent, if there's a parent at home, dealing with mental health. We're following the needs of the student individually.
And also, of the 22 of you, how many of you rowed school to school?
Most of us. I think there's only three of us currently.
Oh, wow.
That are at one school.
You, Lisa, Kim.
That's it. Yeah. Yeah. Spotswood Elementary, Riverbend High School, and Massaponics High School have individual social workers.
Personally. Thank you very much for your time, and for all that you folks do. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I think this is just a very important tie into, in fact, one of our public comments this evening about what we're doing, and clearly, for our budget, we invested into your department, and like we would like to every year, but this year, we were able to actually make the investment and hopefully give you guys more support to do what we need to do, as Dr. Meyer mentioned, that mental health has such a large impact on a safe and secure environment. So very thankful for the work you do in our school system, and I hope that we can definitely increase your department and get more impacts and catch children even earlier, and get them the support that they need. Dr. Baker, did you have something?
Erin, may I make a comment to this? I speak with lots of people consistently, and one of the things that people constantly ask me is, how come you need so many teachers? And what you've done tonight is to elaborate, to say, you know, we do a lot more than teach reading and writing and arithmetic in our schools. And people do not recognize the broad area of responsibility and challenges that our staff and you folks attempt to and resolve in many, many ways. And when we take that big picture, you begin to say, don't you wish you had more people to help, because you could keep building on the problems we're trying to solve? That's not just how do you add and subtract and multiply. So thanks very much for elaborating and outlining the real responsibilities of our educational division.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much. I just wanted to, can I go? You didn't say my name. Sorry, you didn't say my name. I was like. I've been a big cheerleader of your, of you and your staff for the past eight years, and I've had nothing but positive support from you guys, and I just really appreciate it. And the Treasure House, and I know others, I know others around town do, and thank you so much. And I wanted to thank you for my plant last week, or what was it, last week, of my card that was really nice in my windmill, a little pinwheel, and it's on my window sill at my house. So anyway, I just appreciate you guys from the bottom of my heart. That's it.
Ms. Shelley.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I don't think you saw my, again, thank you for all you do, your whole team. All of our social workers are always absolutely amazing. Thank you for bringing us this information. I think anyone that knows about the ACES, and now we all know in Spotsylvania County, that it makes us look at the students and see what is going on with our kids, because we know that, I mean, there might be one, but then once we look at those ACES, we could see, and by just talking to the student, we might find out there's three or four. That's not even all of them. So I really appreciate you enlightening the board, but in, more importantly, enlightening our staff about the ACES, and then resilience. It just, it takes a relationship, and that, I think that piece can be the biggest part of discipline. If a kid has, a student has a relationship with one or two individuals in a building, then if they mess up, that might, just, and they see that person, they may put their head down and it's like, I don't want to mess up anymore. Help me so I don't mess up. So thank you so much. I really appreciate it. You guys are awesome. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Dr. Baker.
That's okay. As I echo a lot of what the board has shared tonight, but I also wanted to thank both of you for sharing and doing the exercise that you've been doing with students, and hopefully each of our board members, as well as others, will have an opportunity to see a lot of the different responses that you received from the students. But I appreciate that, as we have been trying to add and accumulate more resources to build our capacity to meet more challenges, more diverse student needs, that I think we can look at the two of you and say, this is an example of why we need more of them. You are excellent examples of the good work that our social workers are doing right now. I appreciate Ms. Richardson's continued leadership and support of you as well, because, as you know, we try to connect and integrate all that we're doing. And I wanted to make a couple of comments, and you might have something you want to share, or you might just nod, whatever you feel like doing, but I wanted to share that it's very interesting, as we try to get to a place of deeper learning for our students, and when we think of deeper learning, we're thinking of academics, and we're thinking of skills. Yet, what we continue to learn, and I'll put it simply, to get to deep learning, we need to have deep personal relationships, we need to have deep connections, which means it extends beyond the school doors, schoolhouse doors, and it goes into the community, and in many cases in your work, it goes to the homes. And so when we talk about this concept of social-emotional learning, and again, if you say, if you, you know, shake your heads no, I'll say, they don't agree. But social-emotional learning is now fundamental. It's not an extra, it's not a consideration, it is a requirement for us to be able to meet the academic and skill-based learning needs that our students have and the outcomes that we pursue. We must first meet those needs, that in many cases, we're not able to even get there until we've been able to address many of the needs and the challenges that our students have come to school with. And lastly, I wanted to share that I know there is a lot of dialogue, debate, concern about, and we've, since I've been in education, this idea of student discipline and what that should look like, and I think a little bit of what I hear from you, as we, again, we embrace the whole child, we still have to view discipline as about learning, as it is about punishing. I don't know that there's a whole lot of research that shows that we better shape children by sending them home, especially into homes where they don't have the supports, for whatever reason, that they need. And so I appreciate the work that you all are doing to help us build capacity to more proactively address those needs. But ultimately, any disciplinary approaches, school-based, classroom-based, administratively, we we want them to help change behavior and help move students into success. And I'm just so glad that we're going to continue, thanks to this school board, thanks to the support of our Board of Supervisors, be able to increase the number of positions so that maybe eventually, as Mr. Twig had asked, maybe you don't have to, I think his word was rove, as much, and I think he's right. We'd like to have it to where we have that one-to-one school-based support, because I know that your work never stops. But thank you again for the good work, and keep it up.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies.
Thanks.
Mrs. Gaines, may you join us for 13.03, the FY19 budget update.
Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board Members, Dr. Baker and Dr. Martin. I am excited this evening to share with you the great work of the Finance Department. Number one, we take great pride in our work. When you look at where we are, particularly our credentials, a Certified Public Accountant, Certified Public Manager, a Certified Virginia School Business Official, Certified Administrator of School Finance and Operations, Bachelor's Degree in Accounting and a Master's Degree in Accounting. Prior to becoming a School Business Official, five years as an Internal Auditor for a Big Six accounting firm. So, tonight, the purpose of this presentation is to provide you with an update on the 2019 budget to highlight three points in the areas of the following. What were the main budget assumptions in your budget for 2019? What is the difference between ADM, Average Daily Membership, and Student Enrollment? And finally, what is the main difference between the original compensation proposal and the adopted compensation proposal? If I can draw your attention to the slides that you have before you. Number one, when you look at budget assumptions, you basically have two types. You have revenue and you have expenditures. When you look at your revenue, you have federal budgets, which are based on grant awards. You have budget assumptions for your local budget, which is based on debt service normally, including additional funding from the county. Then there are three key components for your state budget. You have rebenchmarking, local composite index, and average daily membership. Now, when you look at average daily membership, keep in mind, this looks at K through 12. It excludes pre-K. When you look at your expenditure assumptions, of course, you have student enrollment. Keep in mind, this does include pre-K through the 12th grade. Another key assumption in your 19 adopted budget was compensation, as this was your number one goal, to increase compensation for your employees. A key factor in that was the Evergreen Study. Pay increases, your number two goal was staffing needs, to make sure your students are successful. Then we looked at benefit assumptions and non-compensation. So, let's talk a little bit about the difference between ADM and student enrollment. You're basically looking at two different calculations that are used for two different sources. They also have two different periods of time in which they relate. So, number one, ADM. It is used by the Virginia Department of Education. It's over a period of time. Average membership from the first day of school through March 31st. It is used for your operating budget. Again, it does exclude pre-K students. And it also takes into account possible gain and loss in students between October and March. Student enrollment, basically, these numbers are used by the operations and leadership team. The difference here is at a point in time, not over a period of time. And that point in time is every year on September 30th. Student enrollment is used for your capital budget. It does include pre-K students, which averages about 400 students a year. And it does not take into account possible gain and loss in students, because it's at a point in time. So, on September 30th, if your number's 24,000, it will not change. So, by way of illustration, if you look here, you basically see your ADM, which is the green, and you see your student enrollment. From FY17, it goes from 23,076 to 23,184, projected 23,186. Now, you might ask the question, "Why are we only showing a small difference in the actual ADM of 23,184?" Keep in mind, this number was revised, because we did receive up-to-date information compared to the projection. When you look at the 132 schools in the Commonwealth of Virginia, ADM is used by the Virginia Department of Ed for budgeting. Therefore, you must be conservative in this number. If you overestimate this number, you can get into a situation, once the school year starts, you will not have enough funding to pay your employees and your bills. So, you must be conservative. What you see in blue is your student enrollment. You can see here, basically, coming from 17 to 18, 222 more students. From 18 to 19, we're projecting 82 more students. So, over a two-year period, we're looking at 304 more students. Keep in mind, student enrollment includes pre-K students, and ADM does not. That brings you to page five. You're basically looking here at students with disabilities enrollment trends for the last six years. I want to draw your attention to that this is at a point in time. The point in time is always December 1st. When you look here, you can see a steady increase, most recently coming from December 1st, 16 to 2017, 154 more students. But take note of the description at the bottom of the slide. Just within a few months, we have gone up to 3,175 students. We have an outstanding special ed program, so therefore, the students continue to come. Keep in mind, too, when you look at these numbers here, majority of the positions that you see in our budget for 19 are targeted towards these students. When you look here, I want to just remind you of what your state revenue trends look like. FY17, you were looking at a budget of 132 million. FY18, 135 million. And you did see a 7.5 million increase from 18 to 19. That is because of rebenchmarking. It's also because our ADM is starting to go up. Just recently, we broke a three-year trend of when those numbers were either level or decreasing. So, again, this is positive news. When you look at ADM, I want to point out a couple of things. This number also changes based on additional information. FY17, 23,076. FY18, as of April 16th, this number was 23,174. In working with our technology department, they were required to submit a report to VDOE based on that information. As of May 12th, we did increase the ADM to 23,184. So, based on that, when you adopted your budget on April 16th, we initially had a projection of 23,175. But you will recall that that number did go up by 11 students, basically giving us an additional 57,000 to cover the additional funds that we needed. So, by contrast, if you look at student enrollment, keep in mind here, we're looking at an increase of 82 from this year to next year. Not one student, but 82. But over a two-year period, 304 more students. And it is true, we're still waiting on the state budget, but it is my understanding that this Wednesday, they will return back to special session, and they will be looking at both the House budget and the Senate budget. But we're optimistic that we'll see something soon. So, here, when you look at your next slide, Slide 7. We do want to commend the Board of Supervisors for their investment in our students. You will see for FY18, 124 million. When Dr. Baker presented his budget, we were informed to increase his transfer in his budget by 1.5. Then again, on February 13th, after you presented your budget, the county administrator included an additional 1.5. And then on April 12th, they did include the budget another 1.750. But keep in mind, that was basically 250,000 short than what you were requesting, plus, it did include one-time funding of 250,000. But we're very grateful for that net increase of 4.4, because it did allow you to approve your budget on April 16th. When you look at the next slide, Slide number eight. Keep in mind, this, again, was your number one goal, to increase compensation for your employees, who are so worthy of this increase. A couple of points I want to make. Number one, this slide is being included, because as you know, sometimes we're being asked to provide, "What is the pay equity between school staff and county staff?" But for this evening, I'm going to focus on the school staff. When you look at 2015, from the time the Superintendent, Dr. Baker, joined the school division to 2019, over this five-year period, teachers have seen a 14.5% increase. Non-teachers, a 13% increase. This includes not only just teachers, but it includes your transportation bus drivers, your maintenance workers, everyone that works for the school division. So, again, you should applaud yourself for this work. Let's take a look at 2019. In 2019, your budget does include a 4% increase for all employees, a 2% increase for administrators. Year one, you are implementing your Evergreen bring-to-minimum and 1/3 of the classification. When you take note of what the county has done, they were able to implement the Evergreen Study last year, so now they're in their second year for FY19. Keep in mind, we were encouraged to implement in a similar format as the county. Goal number two of your FY19 budget was to ensure that we had additional resources for our students to ensure that they were being successful. So, here, you see requested additional staffing resources, 60 positions. You see several positions, school social worker, you see school counselors. Keep in mind, these positions are to support your existing student base. In addition, the growing increase in your special ed population. So, you can see those 60 positions there. I want to take a moment just to commend you again, this board, you have been very forward-thinking. You have a five-year division-wide plan, and you took it a step further to create a five-year action plan for health insurance. So, with that, over the last two years, you have saved the county, the school division, 3.6 million dollars. This was able to be achieved by working with the Employee Compensation Focus Group that Dr. Baker put in place about three years ago. I do want to make mention for FY18, the 1.8 million that you see in savings. Those particular savings primarily were garnered through the renegotiation of prescription drug costs, as well as revising our stop-loss insurance. But when you look at 2019, that 1.8 million dollars was saved as a result of increasing premiums for our employees. So, it made perfect sense, when we were able to identify savings in other areas, that fund should go back to the employees, because here, they were picking up additional cost. Point in case, you can see here on this particular slide, for FY19, the employee only is going up by 26 dollars. As a point in reference, when we met with you a few months ago, this monthly increase actually was going to be 55 dollars a month. But you asked staff to go back, look at the numbers, and identify a way to bring that increase down. So, we were able to bring that down to 26 dollars per month in terms of an increase by basically increasing the co-pay by 5 dollars for Key Care Expanded. But you can see some of the other monthly increases, employee plus spouse, 200, the other plan, 230. So, again, these are the increases that our employees had to pick up for FY19. So, let's talk a little bit about Evergreen, as this is one of the key assumptions in your budget for FY19. A couple of points we want to make here. Number one, I want to commend my staff, Leah Underwood, Rick Lauterback, Bridget Smith-Hurd, Melissa Webster, and Phil Traer. I am commending them for their performance in a detailed analysis by employee. 594, basically personnel files that they had to review. And because of their diligence, their fiduciary responsibility being fulfilled, they were actually able to have the fiscal impact of this study come in less than what was initially predicted. Point in case, January 22nd, you'll basically see the Employee Compensation Group made a recommendation to use a hybrid of the range penetration for teachers and classification for non-teachers. Within six days, seven days after that, the Superintendent presented his budget on January 29th. So, therefore, it made sense for staff to include in his budget the Evergreen Study based on an estimate. Seven days is not a lot of time to calculate those numbers. As we continue to work with Evergreen, we basically confirmed with them on February 13th, that there was a need to make an adjustment to the results of the study. Because when you look at our system, the hire date and the original date remain the same, even if you change a position. This is a limitation of our system. They were optimistic that our new system that we're in the process of implementing, point in case, this year, we're implementing two new systems. It will be addressed. February 2018, this is when staff basically had completed their review, 90-95% of 594 personnel files. This is a very cumbersome process. Then between April 14th and April 16th, we were looking at various scenarios, and we basically had to plot 600 individuals on a pay scale. Keep in mind, we have about 100 pay scales, so you can imagine that that takes time. And we were more concerned with accuracy over timeliness. We wanted to make sure that we gave our best numbers. So, when you look at the savings coming from Evergreen, the bottom line is, the savings came from staffing turnover and staffing changes. So, let's dig a little deeper. When you look here at Slide 13, this was a particular slide that was included in Dr. Baker's budget on January 2019. You can basically see here, a 2% increase for all staff going across, an additional 2% for teachers. When you look here for other staff, that line was blank indeed, and the 967,000 amount was an estimate, an estimate of the 594 individuals, because we were still working on those numbers. The total proposal was 6.8 million dollars. When staff presented to you on April 16th, you can basically see here, what we did was to use the same format, or emulate the same format that was used by the county, because we were told on numerous occasions that we should implement the Evergreen Study similar to that of the county. So, when you look at the county, you'll basically see they had three phases. Here, we have three phases. Number one was looking at a 2% increase for teachers and for other staff. When you see the star, non, 795,000 dollars, this number is basically the cost of giving additional non-teachers only a 2%. That was the primary purpose of that number. Why? Because as Dr. Baker had staff go out to do Employee Compensation Focus Group analysis, staff asked numerous times, "Would you please consider giving non-teachers support staff, bus drivers, cafeteria workers, maintenance workers, an additional 2%?" Because they knew they had to take on the additional increases in health insurance. So, this number here, 795,000, is the additional cost of a 2%. It is not intended to say that this is the amount of where we are. Even in this amount, it does include a portion of the Evergreen Study results. So, here, once you apply the 2% as the county did, what they called this longevity, the remaining amount to bring the remaining employees whole per the Evergreen Study was 229,000 dollars. So, again, when you look here at the analysis on April 16th, the compensation proposal still at 6.8 million dollars. This slide... This slide again is only presented for illustrative purposes so that you can see the format used by the county. Staff was encouraged to use the same format, the same template. Thus, we did do that. You can see the first line is their COLA. The second line is their longevity increases, anywhere from 1% to 3%, and then the remainder amount to make their employees whole according to the Evergreen study. So I think this particular slide is the primary slide that staff would like to illustrate this evening. The original proposal going across, you can see 6.8 million dollars. The updated proposal on April the 16th, 6.7, 6.8. But the difference is only 57,000 dollars. So in essence, the proposal from the original proposal and the revised proposal, the bottom line remained the same, the same. So how do we get to where we are today? The original fiscal impact, 967,000, we were estimating at that time based on the study that had been received from Evergreen. It was 594 non-teachers that were due additional funds to bring to minimum and classification. As we continued to work with Evergreen, all the way from January through April, we were able to identify that there were about 61 individuals due to job changes that were no longer due this particular pay raise. So it was the responsibility of the staff to make that necessary adjustment. That is where you garnered savings. These individuals were no longer eligible because the purpose of the Evergreen study was to bring them to market based on their current position, not on their original hire date that could have been 10 years ago or 20 years ago. Also, when you look here, another piece of the savings was the fact that the data was over a two-year period. When Evergreen did their study, it was based on data coming from November 2016, which was FY17. We prepared your budget for FY19. So over a two-year period, we had 75 people to leave the division. As a result, we saved 72,000. Therefore, the Evergreen study, the initial fiscal impact went from 967,594 individuals down to 531,458 individuals. And because of those savings that were identified due to the due diligence of the staff, we presented to you on April 16th, an option for you to consider, which was to provide non-teachers with an additional 2% as many of them had requested. Again, it made sense because when you look at those non-teachers, bus drivers, cafeteria workers, majority of them, their funds are taken up by health insurance. So any option that we had an opportunity to put monies back in their pocket, we thought that was a viable option to bring to the school board. As a result, the school board supported that option and approved the budget 7 to 0. And we thank you for that, and I'm sure the staff does as well. So where does that leave us now? Based on your work that was completed on April the 16th, based on the HR department and the finance department working together, we were able to issue our contracts to our employees on May the 18th. This was history in Spasylvania because we've never issued contracts in the month of May. But again, we commend you, school board members, for approving your budget on April the 16th, 30 days in advance, which had never been done as well. By way of next steps, budget appropriation by the Board of Supervisors. The HR department will continue very aggressively to recruit and hire with those new positions. We also will be working very closely with the procurement department to release RFPs and IFPs for our CIP projects. This budget book will be coming out on July the 6th. And then we're working to load the budget for FY19 so we can be ready for another great year with our students. So thank you this evening, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Before there's questions, if I may, just in case it comes up, I'd like to share a few closing comments to, and also to punctuate some of the points that Ms. Gaines has made and shared. First is, I want to again acknowledge this board for your work throughout the budget season, in particular, to come together and unify over what was in the best interest of our employees and our school division moving forward in one work session on April 16th. Clearly shows that each of you felt very strongly about moving forward, particularly in the area of the adjustment to the pay proposal, and I appreciate that. And I know that our staff does, as well as not only the cabinet and executive staff, but the extended staff throughout the school division. I do want to thank Ms. Gaines, my entire leadership team, but particularly over the last few months as they have managed some transition within their staff, working hard to try to dig and get down to the payroll level, individual payroll level, to try to discover, among other areas, are there any other areas where we can maximize investments and where we can potentially reallocate to do more for our staff? I want to, very quickly for the board, as I've tried to in individual conversations with some of our local Board of Supervisors, as well as with individuals on this board, I want to go back to, I think on multiple occasions during the budget season, I and my staff, we had the pleasure of being able to answer questions and to share information and to try to provide clarity to the governing body. And I want to again say how grateful and appreciative I am that they certainly put forth a great effort to provide this amount of funding for us. And I know that those decisions are not easy for anyone. But I in particular appreciate that we got most of the way there with a very ambitious budget proposal, one that I think, both in the short term and the long term, is going to help us. I will say that while I'm very pleased, as I know you are with the majority of this budget, there were difficult decisions that have really been made over the last couple of years that I don't believe we're going to be coming back to request any additional increases on our employees for health insurance. Now the challenge becomes, how do we sustain providing this kind of a pay increase over an additional two years? Which is exactly what we intended to do, and I think we were pretty, we were crystal clear about that from the beginning. But in the timeline, on that Thursday evening that our Board of Supervisors, again, appreciate them approving a budget that enabled us to receive an additional 1.5 in recurring funding and 250,000 in one-time funding to almost completely close the gap. That evening, it did not occur to me that, nor do I recall the context coming up, that I would have tried to share that we were, as we always would be, looking to try to maximize the investment. We did not have the final numbers that evening. I wish that I had in retrospect because maybe that would have been something to share. But if sharing it, I'm not sure what sharing it would have resulted in. Would sharing it, if we had known for sure, resulted in, well, that's not what you shared in the beginning? I really am still not quite sure about that part. But I always say that if there's a way for us to move forward in good faith and in a relationship and trust, and somebody at a table asks to apologize, I will. If it'll enable us to move forward. Because there was never any intention to mislead, yet we found ourselves in that position of trying to explain that. But in the conversations that I've had with individual Boards of Supervisors, I know that in the end, they're very happy that we are able to maximize this funding on behalf of our employees. And so I trust that that will continue to be the attitude and the disposition that will come back to us. But I also want, in addition to that, to very quickly address that there's a, tends to be, and I'll call it a narrative about more students is really the only thing. And I mean, when I say more students, a total of more students, you know, should always be, should be the only reason that additional staffing is needed for our school division. Well, it's timely that our social workers presented tonight and when we consider the complexity of need and we consider the explosive growth that we are seeing with our students of special needs that we know in many cases are going to cost more per pupil and are going to need different, more and differentiated resources, we must respond to that. So while I think the clarity has been provided this evening regarding ADM and student enrollment, if we weren't projecting any more students next year, our request would not have changed. And I want to make sure that part's clear in terms of the amount of staffing that we believe we need. And as I think I illustrated or tried to clarify that evening to our Board of Supervisors, if we could, we would like to have the 120 positions right now. But we understand both fiscal constraints and we understand realities, and we wanted to try to have a plan that was sustainable moving forward. And then finally, the urgings that we received, and I don't believe they were, they were not selfish urgings. They were understandable urgings that came from our staff, that came from members of this school board. You know, we have folks that could see a negative impact in their paychecks despite all of the compensation that's going forward. And that was never a desire, but we also knew, how do we do both? And so had we not been able, through this analysis, to find additional savings, we still may have come to you on April 16th and even beyond that and said, here are some other ways that we might be able to increase the amount of money that is going to go to our employees. Because frankly, 3.6 million dollars in savings, I think is worth 400,000 dollars in one given year that we're able to reallocate. And as I use the word maximize, we are maximizing it. It's not going somewhere it shouldn't. It's not being drawn from somewhere that it shouldn't. I really appreciate that this investment was made on behalf of the Board of Supervisors, and I am very pleased that we can do that. It's still not enough for many of our employees. But if we can sustain it over the next two years without any additional health insurance increases, I think that we can really have our employees in a much better position over the next two years. So I thank you for letting me share that. But I wanted to make sure before there are other questions that you heard from me on those points. And if I can help with any questions, be glad to as well.
We'll start with Ms. Shelley. Do you have anything?
Ms. Gaines. Bravo. Thank you so much. I hate that you had to do this. I think all of the questions that were asked have been answered. I truly think that you have done a marvelous job of showing that we have maximized our investment in our staff and our students. But I also want to remind you that this was, you know, the Evergreen study, as you mentioned, was done two years ago. And things change over two years. So that was, the fact that your staff went through 600 individual files to find, find that, to see where they were. Were they still employees? Were they, had they been? Yeah, I'm thinking that there were probably principals and assistant principals on the list when they were hired 20 years ago. They were a teacher and, or someone who's changed, things have changed. So I understand the difference. So thank you. That was, I'm sure, very tedious work. Looking at our special education numbers, and that we've gone up 145 students since our December 1 count. Our funding is based on that December 1 count, yet we've gone up 145 students. That's something that I think people need to be focused on and paying attention to. Special education is one of our, our cost drivers. The, I've got some notes, and I've got a whole lot more, so I know I'm going to miss something. When you compared, in your comparison, on slide 15, and the county, their fiscal year 18, 19, they had a 1.7 million dollar increase, and we had a 2-point, if I'm looking at this correct? No, there's, can you tell me 15? That's the counties, that's all county?
All county, yes, ma'am.
So they have a 2.2 million dollar for 18 and 1.7 million for 19 for their compensation. They're one-third the size of us. And we have a, I don't want this to sound negative, but most of our employees are, have advanced education. So that's something else that we need to look at for our employees is we're, we have to pay a little bit more. So that's a big difference. And I thought I was going to be able to get my thoughts together quicker, a little bit longer. I will probably have more. You might have to come back to me. But I want to thank you. I want to thank our supervisors for the allocation that they have for the schools. They are, we were not quite fully funded, but we were very close. And because of our reallocation, we were able to give everyone, at least, sorry administrators, we were able to give most of our employees a 4% increase. And there are, the people who were not in that original pay increase, truly, I know they're appreciative of this increase. But I also, I'm going to stop here. I have a whole lot more I could say. But thank you so much for your presentation. I hope it cleared it up for many people, and don't be surprised if I have to say something else later.
Dr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mrs. Gaines and finance staff, thanks as well for the excellent presentation. I don't know what the next step would be. If you are someone, how this information's going to be transmitted to the county? If it's staff to staff? Okay, thank you, because that's the, so the information. I know that people can listen to the video and see what's been presented, and the charts are self-evident. It is a shame that some charts were misunderstood because I did go back and listen to the presentation. But first of all, I want to thank the Board of Supervisors and Sheriff Harris for the support of the budget and giving us our SROs for our elementary schools. I think it's going to help address a lot of concerns, you know, for safety and welfare for our students. It's one piece. It's not the whole thing. It's one piece of the whole puzzle, as was mentioned earlier this evening. Also, thanks for clarifying, you know, we think revenue and expense, it's just obvious. A revenue is different than an expenditure. But until you explain what is the revenue number for, that is ADM, and expenditure is enrollment, one is continuous counting, the other is time and place. You know, that, I think you made it quite clear what is the difference between the two so that we should not be holding up a sheet saying, you know, how do you explain only a difference of one yet you're asking for so many more teachers and staffing? So I think you did a very good job in explaining that. I think you did also a good job on showing through the charts that this was not new money found. It's merely allocation of how funds are used within the compensation plan. And there was a compensation plan. I do recall this board, through the different work sessions, talked about the impact on our staff. And how can we minimize that impact so that whatever increase staff is receiving, it's not going out the other hand with the payment for the health insurance? And we looked at that, and we were especially concerned about those who are earning the least amount, our lowest-paying employee groups, that are not getting the increase, and a 2% wouldn't cut it. And we looked at how to restructure even the health insurance plan in order to better allow our employees to make choices, and you set up forums, et cetera, to educate our staff. So there is a difference between revenue and expenditure. There is a difference in allocation. It's not new money. Please don't compare us to Stafford County. That is a false comparison. It has nothing to do with one with the other. This is strictly dealing with monies that were intended for a purpose, for comp- This is strictly dealing with monies that were intended for a purpose, for compensation, they're being used for that purpose and we can best serve our employees by being able to give them the 4%. I did hear some criticism when I listened to the tape about why we made a rush to make a decision. I think you explained part of that tonight, but since I was a board member that made the motion to approve a budget that night, I feel I need to comment on that. One, there was nothing that was going to change in terms of, once staff gave us a way that we could address our needs that we saw within the budget, and that was through the compensation and our staffing, there was no reason to hold up a decision by a month, which meant contracts could not be issued for another month. For what purpose? Nothing to be accomplished by that. It made all the sense in the world to allow staff to do their job, allow the superintendent to issue the contracts, to allow those contracts for staff to make their decisions and with the 4% for our support staff and our teachers and our administrators, they can make their decisions. And then that way HR can be on the job to start to sign and get signups, so we know exactly where we are, how can we best staff? And if we can get a leg up on Stafford, so much the better. And if we can make the decisions more timely, so much the better. I see no reason why we should be criticized for making a rush to judgment when it was in the best interest of Spotsylvania County schools and Spotsylvania County staff and our students. So with that, I think I really do appreciate all the work that you did. I appreciate the analysis that you went through to present this and hopefully this will clarify that, you know, the decisions that we made were in transparency, there was nothing that was being hidden or hidden away whatsoever. And I think your presentation here helps to clarify those matters. With that, I yield the floor. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mrs. Gaines and finance staff.
Mrs. Phelps.
Thank you, LaShawn, for coming here. I just have a couple of questions and my understanding, this is the school board's budget, not the county administrator's budget nor the board of supervisors, right?
That's correct, yes ma'am.
All right, I'm just checking. So I just had a couple of questions when I was looking over this and I appreciate this, but I was wondering, I didn't receive it in the agenda, it's given, the packet is given here to go over it with you. So I just would like, I like read ahead documentation, that's just for me, just to read ahead. So, and that would answer a lot of questions that I already wrote down, just to ask, that's it. So, and one of the questions I did have, and I think you explained it, is when did the 75 people retire? Was it over a two-year span, is, am I correct?
Yes, ma'am. So when you look at the next to the last slide, which is slide 17, when you look here, it's two components of the savings. We basically had about 75 individuals from November 16th through the data that we were using for the budget, which is FY '19, over two-year period, that are no longer with the division. But also keep in mind that we did not receive our results from Evergreen until almost the summer last year. So that is correct, over two-year period, yes ma'am.
And for some reason I had 62, but 61 were no longer eligible for benefits, right?
Due to change in assignment, yes ma'am.
So that's what, this helps me, helps me answer my own questions before I came. And so was this information that we have here, was that available prior to the initial presentation of the school board budget to the board of supervisors? Like was this information available to them?
No, it was not. So for example, when you look at the point in case, the timeline, what you see on page 12, the staff had been working even that night while we were sitting at the board of supervisors meeting, April the 12th, they were still working on the scenarios. As Dr. Baker had indicated, within the finance department, not only have we had staffing changes division-wide, but we've had actually staffing changes in the finance department. So no, this information was not available in its totality. And a point of reference, when we spoke to you all on April the 16th, we were still working that morning and staff were here to midnight. They've been working extremely hard to make sure that we're giving you information that is accurate.
And so when will the new system be up? I keep hearing about it all the time.
I'm ready for it, I know you are too. So this is where we are. For the Munis finance system, we were able to go live July the 5th. So been in that system now for about nine months, 10 months. With the Munis payroll system, we are projecting to go live towards the end of January. Until then, for the last two years, we basically have been running dual systems, primarily in the payroll department for the last year. You have payroll in the I Series as well as Munis. And that takes up a lot of time as well, because one thing you don't mess with, people's pay. So that's one of our primary focuses.
And so the one thing I did come out of this, in coming up here, which really, we already approved the budget and had the whole meeting and the work session, the one thing I do, I did come out of this was that found money, but I hear it was, we found savings, right?
Yes, ma'am, just like we say.
It's not found money, but we found savings.
I'm not going to say we found savings, what I will say is that just with the health insurance, we were deliberate in identifying $3.6 million in savings. When you went through all of the analysis, 600 personnel files, you were able to see employees are no longer with us. That is usual and customary. By the time we get to next week, we're going to have more people. It's just how it works. So it's not found and it's not discovered, it's through detailed analysis, line by line.
I appreciate your work and also I appreciate every board of supervisors that, you know, while they didn't fully fund us, you know, they do support the schools and they have. And I was at the meetings and I appreciate what the board of supervisors do and everybody here, everybody. So I'm just, thank you so much, thanks.
Ms. Gaines, just one thing, I know Mr. Braswell may be speaking, I just wanted to clarify, because when we say that the, I want to make sure it's clear, the Evergreen study's not two years old, but that we were looking at fiscal year, they looked at, they did an analysis of fiscal year 17, correct?
Correct.
And then this year is fiscal year 18 and the next year is fiscal year 19. So I just want to make sure that no one misunderstands that they conducted the study and presented their findings about a year ago to this board, but it was over, we're really looking at three different fiscal year periods that are considered and impacted here. And I just want to make sure that years-wise, no one gets confused, thanks.
Mr. Braswell.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Gaines, I want to thank you for your briefing and your report, very detailed. I really have no questions for you, but I do have comments to make. I want to thank, first of all, Ms. Palmer for her comments in the public comment portion of this meeting. She made reference to a newspaper report that was on Friday, I believe, where I made comments about my apparent frustration with the fact that we have to present this presentation again and present it when we should be focused primarily on testing, because that's what our schools should be, that's our main effort at this particular time, it's how we validate the work that we do. And that we should be focused on graduation, because that is the pinnacle of what this process is all about. And we should be celebrating scholarship and there's a lot of students that have accomplished many great achievements and accolades and we should be applauding those, because we have tremendous students. That's what we should be doing during this time of year and not engaging in what I consider chicanery. So let me start off by saying why I was frustrated and agitated in that Freelance Star article, as you may be surprised, when you have a conversation with a news reporter, they don't always say exactly what you said. But let me share with the listening public what I said, because I really have nothing to hide. I book in, they book into my comments by, on the front end, saying that I felt that this whole situation that we're dealing with was more of a scapegoating, if you will. And on the back end, I said that we didn't pull the wool over anyone's eyes. So let me start with the scapegoating portion. We, I want to first of all, start off by telling all the employees of Spotsylvania County Schools that Baron Braswell was one board member that was very vigilant, very enthusiastic about the fact that we needed to encourage and increase our own internal capacity, that we needed to do that before we went to our board of supervisors to ask for any additional money. And part of the way that we should do that is by looking at our health insurance costs and try to encourage our employees to take advantage of more innovative health insurance products and to discourage the purchase and use of expensive health insurance plans, i.e. low deductibles and low coinsurances and stop-loss limits. We had a plan over the past couple of years and my fellow board members here leaned forward in the saddle and they took some political risk. There's not very many employees that are excited about the fact that they got a 4% increase in pay, but some of that money is, as was illustrated, is being taken away from them in health insurance costs. And we recognize that we not only represent the employees of the Spotsylvania County schools, but we also represent the citizens of this county. And for our citizens, when we save $3.6 million of recurring money, that's three pennies on the property tax rate. If we would have done everything, exactly the way we have done it, and got funded in the way we were funded, in order to make sure that we could do what we'd done, it would have cost three cent more on the property tax. Now I don't care if you call yourself conservative, I don't care if you call yourself liberal, but if you save three cents on the property tax, somebody ought to be saying hallelujah. And that's what we did. We saved three cents on our portion of the budget, as it pertained to that. And what frustrated me about it was, is that I had a conversation with Mr. Ross and I had a conversation with Mr. Lut McLaughlin and I emphasized to those two gentlemen that we did such a great job of leaning forward in the saddle and garnering savings so that we would be able to have a, some capacity within our budget, to make sure that we did our part before we asked the board of supervisors to assist. I'm very disappointed in the fact that in their criticism, in their perceived pulling out of the splinter out of our eye, out of our eye, they never considered the log in their eye. Why do I say that? Well, we've had the CBRC and other organizations come and evaluate and criticize and look at the way we do business and they never found anything wrong in the way we'd done business. Now, we've been accused of the way we handle helmets, we've been accused of school activity funds, which there was no deficiency. In fact, Brown and Edwards Certified Public Accountants did an audit of our school activity funds and found us with no faults. We have audits every year between the county and the school board and they indicated that we had no deficiencies worthy of common. And so with that being said, not one of the members of the CBRC have bothered to even go back to their board of supervisors and say to them, hey, look what the school division did in leaning forward on their health insurance, why won't we consider that from the county side? I'm sure they could have found $800,000 to $1 million of recurring costs on their health insurance. But criticism is always geared towards the school division and scapegoating us as though we're the boogeyman. Now, I don't care how you slice it, three pennies on the real estate tax is praiseworthy, not something for us to be criticized for, not something for us to be assumed that we are doing something that is not in the best interest or not in partnership with our board of supervisors. Now, I'm thankful that, and I've had an opportunity to talk to some of the board of supervisors and explain my burn, and they understood where I was coming from and I'm glad that they had an opportunity to do that. I think they do an excellent job in making sure that we're properly funded, as evident as was mentioned by our superintendent and other board members here, that we have been properly funded over the past couple of years, so we can do the things that we need to do in Spotsylvania County. But I want to read this, it comes from the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. It says the Spots, it's on page 46. The Spotsylvania County Public School System, School Board, is responsible for elementary and secondary education within the county's jurisdiction. School board members are elected to four-year terms by the voters of the district in which the member resides. The school board functions independently of the county board and the county administration. We're responsible for taking the monies that are given to us and determining what's in the best interest of Spotsylvania County schools, not the board of supervisors. We can't have or abdicate our authority to do the job that we were elected to, to do, to have someone else do our job. So I commend every one of us here on this dais for seeing the facts that were presented to us, making the valid assumptions that were required to look out for the best interest of our employees and voting in the affirmative for this budget. I have a burn because I'm a person that believes in fair play. And I don't feel that the school division, over the past couple of weeks, was presented in a fair light. We've always tried to make sure through the budget process that everyone received all the data that they needed, not only in terms of verbal presentations, but we and our staff answer voluminous questions, year in and year out, about the budget process. So I had that burn and I want to thank Ms. Palmer for bringing up the fact that, yeah, there was something that was said in the paper, but I want everybody to know what I really said and what I really meant and how I really feel. I want to have a good working relationship, but it has to be based off of respect, not contempt. This board has to be able to do its job, what it was elected to do, without interference, just like we have to respect and honor our boards of supervisors, so they can do the job that they were elected to do. I always tell them, I don't care what the tax rate is, give me the money. And I'm going to stay with that particular charge, because I know they got a difficult job to do in determining what the tax rate is. But we also have a difficult job to do what's in the best interest of Spotsylvania County children. Because, see, we educate little Republicans, we educate little Democrats, we educate little independents, and we educate little apathetics. It doesn't matter to us. We even educate little Tea Partiers. It doesn't matter to us. We want to do the right thing by our students. So let's get rid of the shenanigans and let's get down to business that's at hand. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. Twigg.
And also noteworthy toward this successful budget was the, and the impetus of the two no votes that came out of our original budget decision in January. And I applaud Lisa, Ms. Phelps, for voting no on that budget on the mere premise that she had gotten raw data from her constituents, enough of it, that said, hey, there's enough people suffering and struggling. people suffering and struggling here, and we have to right a wrong. 4% and 2% was not sufficient. And as the result of that, in several conversations with Dr. Baker and due diligence and his professionalism and getting his staff in gear, we're able to identify a number that allowed everybody to get to the positive. And that whole thing, I think, ended up being satisfactory. It worked well toward the satisfactory budget, and we will all maintain our responsibility toward hearing our people and attaining and ascertaining, attaining information and ascertaining results and work in due diligence with our finance department. And so let's not forget that. And also, a special thank you for this summary data. It was all the information's there, and it's well summarized. Thank you.
Mr. Blaine.
There's not much more to be said, to tell you the truth. I'm impressed with my colleagues and their capability of finances. I'm very impressed with our staff and what you've done just consistently, and I'd like to thank you for that. And I know that the public benefits, and every time you do something, it ultimate goal is to say what's good for our kids, and our financial structure is one of those very important areas. Thank you.
Thank you for this presentation. Again, it was a great summary, but of information that was already available and presented, so I'm happy that you took the time to put it together. Some of the information in a different manner may be more easily recognized because it was pointed out, but all the information was already presented at the work session at the budget presentation. So thank you for going out of your way to do it differently. With my background in business and education economics and serving on the Audit and Finance Committee for the past five years, I clearly understand that budget assumptions are fluid and they change frequently and often. Budgets are not exact numbers, they're projections based on assumptions. And especially in the schools case, it's pretty far out what we're making assumptions on. So the fact that every year we're as close as we are, it definitely worries me, but very good job, finance team, for making sure we don't go over, but it's a little close for my comfort. As clearly discussed in the previous work session, tonight's budget update presentation proves that no money was found. The totals of the original plan and revised compensation plan for non-teachers was basically budget neutral. The savings from the Evergreen study was not due to money being found as charged incorrectly, but it was due to a change in assumptions. Specifically, a revised 458 employees were due more money versus 594 employees to staff turnover and clarification of hire dates based on consultation with Evergreen. On April 16th, in an effort to maximize investment in our compensation plan, this board made a unanimous decision, specifically a 7-0 vote, to take those savings and return them back into the pockets of our bus drivers, cafe workers, paras, bookkeepers, and other support staff, who repeatedly have asked the board to give them a 4% raise, like teachers, to offset the rates of health insurance costs, which all seven members of the board had worked hard to try to get this done. This board didn't do the right thing because in the FY '19 budget based on our health consultants' modernization proposal, employees will see a significant increase in health insurance rates as identified in the presentation. This was a board decision, not a staff decision, and it's important that we own this as a board, so I'm happy that everybody spoke out this evening to own this. We adopted the budget on April 16th with this revised assumption. I thank the finance staff for taking the time to perform a detailed analysis by employee while implementing a new financial system, paying invoices weekly, and paying over 3,000 employees each month. Otherwise, some employees may have been paid raises beyond what Evergreen recommended. Taking time needed to complete this analysis with care and analysis should be commended, not scrutinized. I also want to thank the Board of Supervisors for their support during this budget season. And they will be, I've been in communication with Mr. Benton very often in the last couple of weeks, and they will be emailing the link to this work session in the morning, along with the link to, or this meeting in the morning, along with the link to the prior work session that also had the information. And we will be, at my request, on May 9th, when I send him the email, we will be, as a board, having a joint meeting with the Board of Supervisors on May 29th at 6:30 at the Holberg Building. So that was confirmed this morning, so hopefully if there's any questions left, we'll be able to answer them for them. But thank you for your presentation, Ms. Gaines.
Thank you for the opportunity to serve.
That brings us to item 14, action items. 14.01, first reading approval of the revisions to school board policy JFC, Code of Student Conduct. Mr. Lynn.
Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board Members, Dr. Baker and Dr. Martin. Each year, staff reviews policy JFC, Code of Student Conduct, to ensure compliance with changes in legislation, as well as to consider other revisions that may be necessary or appropriate. The proposed changes were reviewed and approved by legal counsel. Administration's recommendation is that the school board approves for first reading the proposed revisions to school board policy JFC, Code of Student Conduct, as you have before you, and I stand prepared to answer any questions you might have for me.
I would like to make a motion to approve the first reading of the student code of conduct.
I will second it.
Motion by Ms. Shelley to approve the first reading of this revisions to the school student conduct, code of conduct. And second by Mr. Blaine, any discussion? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
On to 14.02, the first reading approval of revisions to school board policies, VSBA, February 2018, policy updates. So those were included.
Madam Chair, I'll make the motion to approve for first reading.
Motion by Dr. Meyer to approve the VSBA policy updates. Second by Ms. Shelley, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 7-0. 14.03, adoption and purchase approval of Cambridge Latin Textbooks Purchase. Ms. Belenko.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Dr. Baker, Dr. Martin. In accordance with our local textbook adoption policy, IIAA, I am before you tonight with the selection and review of Latin textbooks for 1 through 4 Latin students. Cambridge University Press produces the North American Cambridge Latin Course 5th Edition. It includes Teaching of Comprehension of Latin Language for Reading Purposes, Developing and Understanding of the History and Culture of Roman Civilization, and encourages a wide range of approaches to language learning through the use of high-quality audiovisual materials. This adoption includes hardcover text, online e-text, and teacher resources. It is Administration's recommendation that the school board adopts and purchases Cambridge Latin textbooks as recommended.
I would. Motion by Mr. Blaine to approve the recommended textbooks purchase.
I move the adoption of the recommended, recommended action.
Ms. Shelley. Seconds, any discussion?
That cost, that's Latin, 1 through 4?
Yes, ma'am.
Sounds like a bargain.
It is, actually, I think it is. We just don't have the high enrollment that we have in some of our other languages, so that does take down the cost considerably.
Okay, looks good, thank you.
Any more questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 7-0.
Thank you.
Thank you. On to 14.04, Special Education Services, Ms. Richardson and Ms. Carter.
Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board Members, Dr. Baker and Dr. Martin. My name is Jamie Carter, I'm the new procurement manager for the schools, and I'm delighted to be here this evening, so thank you for the opportunity. Tonight, I am presenting the award recommendation and to enter contract for special education services. The school division issued an RFP, or Request for Proposal, for special education services on November 22nd, 2017. The RFP was initiated to procure providers with experiences, licensed, and certified staff for the following positions when required on a short or long-term basis. The positions include speech language pathology, occupational therapist, physical therapist, dance therapist, music therapist, American Sign Language, applied behavior analysis, who is board-certified, school psychologist, and Medicaid billing as required. The procurement was advertised in the Freelance Star newspaper, posted on the EVA, the state procurement website, as well as the school division's purchasing website. Eleven proposals were received on January 3rd, 2018, and the top six firms were interviewed on May 9th, 2018. If contracts are approved, the Student Support Services Division will have an ample pool of firms with varying degrees of available resources to provide staffing needs as needed and required. Based on the final scoring of the proposals and interviews conducted, the evaluation committee is recommending the school board award contracts to the following six firms for an initial one-year term with four additional one-year renewal periods, and those firms include Allied Instructional Services, Cobb Pediatric Therapy, ProCare Therapy, Soliant Health, Staffing Option Solutions, Sun Belt Staffing. And at this time, Tedjor and I would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
I would like to make a motion to approve the RFPs for special education services.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Shelley to approve the awarding of the RFP. And second by Dr. Meyer, any discussion? We'll start with Mr. Blaine.
From December 31st of 2016 to 2017, December, we had an increase of 154 students, according to records, if I'm accurate. And from December of 1978, 2071, five months, four months ago, actually, we've had an increase of 145 students in four months. How do we explain where all these students are coming from? Are we identifying more people moving in, or what?
That's a great question, Mr. Blaine. It's actually a combination of all of those factors. So it's us finding students eligible under special education, and it is also students that are transferring into Spotsylvania County Public Schools.
Do you have any idea, if you could give us some average about how many, how many special needs children are there per classroom, per teacher? I mean, of those who are teaching, how many students do each of them have in a class?
Sure, so when you look at our special education teachers across the school division, we can carry a maximum of 20 points. So that could be one student per point, which means 20, 20 students, but it all depends on their disability category.
Yes, I understand. If you were to make an average, what is that average, though?
I would say that the average caseload is anywhere from 16 to 18 points, if not pushing that 20-point maximum.
Meaning, and for practical purposes, 16 to 18 points?
Students.
Students, right, okay. I think the point I was just trying to make there really is that the student-teacher ratio of children who have special needs, but when we were out looking for money to hire a teacher, it doesn't affect that. And we're always talking about money and where money comes from for different things, and our needs dictate how many teachers we're going to have because we have some almost one-on-one situations, I know. That's what I wanted to know, thank you.
Welcome.
Mr. Twig, as you.
Yes. Is there a committee that assimilates all this data and determines everything you prescribe for the upcoming five years?
Yes, it was a committee comprised of folks from the procurement office, as well as current related services providers across the school division that currently work for us, and then administrators from the Office of Student Support Services, along with Mr. Treier from Finance.
Thank you. To coincide with that, how did you determine that a five-year contract was justified? Or please justify that.
Well, it's actually just going to be for the initial one year, so if next year, perhaps we don't need these services, or these can be cut in half, we can reevaluate them. Yes. So it's optional renewals on the four.
Right, but essentially, from my vantage point, a strong business sense says and determines that this is bad business. The only way you're going to get rid of a contractor early is through them providing a lawsuit. And maybe not for a small social services consulting firm, but there's two other groups that are coming right at us right after yours that are seeking five-year terms, one year with four-year options. And, you know, you could say that everybody does it. Well, I'm a trendsetter. I don't like to hinge on something everybody else does. Secondly, and primarily, because of that guaranteed lawsuit, you're jeopardizing two, three, four years instead of one or two years if you offer a three-year maximum. And that also, that five-year piece vice a two or a three, takes us way out of control, control that is simply maintained if we have a two or a three-year contract. And I really personally don't care how small the company is. In every business I've been involved with over a long period of time, five years is, yes, it exists, but it barely exists. It's practically unheard of. And I think in this environment, the nature of this business, I think that's bad business, and on that premise alone, I'll be voting no. Now, that aside, I applaud everything that you all have prescribed, prescribed, and please continue on doing the best you can with everything we have to offer you as tools and services, and I'll help you in any other way possible. Thank you.
Mr. Braswell.
I have two questions. First question I want to ask is the evaluative criteria that was used to determine the six firms that were selected, how, what was your evaluative criteria? Because it says here that costs vary, so I just wanted to find out what was your evaluative criteria to select the six companies that you chose?
Sure, I'll get that for you. On one of them, experience qualifications and ability to perform was one of the criteria. Key staff qualifications was another criteria. The response to the actual scope of work was one of the criteria. The proposed cost was another criteria. Experience with similar projects, another criteria, and the final would be location of the firm.
And did you weigh those criteria?
Yes, sir, we did.
Yeah, tell me how you did that, please.
The experience qualifications and ability to perform was 25%. Key staff qualifications, 25%. Response to the scope of work, 25%. Proposed cost was 10%. Experience with similar projects, 5%, and location of firm was 10%. Experience with similar projects, five percent. And location of firm was ten percent.
So in your, in your weighing, cost was not the primary determinant?
No, sir, it was not.
And then the final question I have is now that you have these six firms that we are going to vote on for your use, how will we go about selecting the ones that we want to use once they're onboard? What's the criteria for that?
Sure. It's very similar to how we operate now, Mr. Braswell. We sort of, these are companies that we are currently contracted with and have been, some of them since two thousand and eight, when we first started facing shortages in the field of related services. But we simply send out an email, separate emails, to all of the companies advertising what our needs are. Oftentimes, they contact us first because they, they access our human resources website, and they see what vacancies we have posted. But every now and then, we do find ourselves in the situation where we have a medical leave situation, and we have to reach out to them so that we can cover that need for that related services staff member.
And so what, what you're saying too is, and it gives you the ability, it powers it down so that you can make decisions?
Absolutely. It gives us a larger pool in which to pull from.
Thank you.
Ms. Phelps? Thanks. So these are all for outside contractors versus in-house, or?
Yes.
Okay, that's what it is. So it says top six firms. Are there more firms on the list?
There were eleven proposals that came in, and we chose the top six. Not all eleven met the entire scope of services that we were looking for.
Is Compass on that list?
Uh, no, they're not. They're not a related service provider.
Are they now?
Uh, no, they're not. They provide a whole different type of services. So this RFP was for speech-language services, occupational therapy, physical therapy, school psych, ASL support, O and M, vision and hearing.
Perfect. So I'm in support of these programs. But I also, like Mr. Twig said, I would be in support of a one-year contract with two additional one-year renewals. I just think the five years is a bit long, the research that I've done and the experience that I have. So that is, I just wanted to share those and ask you those questions as far as the outside contractors versus in-house. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I just, first of all, when we say in-house versus contracted, we would probably have more contracted related service providers if we could pay them more. It would cost us more to hire more of those people. Well, first of all, they don't want to come for what we hire, what we pay. We do have some. But they find it more lucrative for themselves to go out into the private sector. So that is one reason we have to hire, have contractors. And I wish we could pay them more. But because of our benefits, that is why it is maybe cost-effective. When we can't fill them, to pay them more, we go out to contracts. Am I correct?
Correct.
Remember that these are related service providers who, these services are in a student's IEP. So if we do not have these employees in our division, yet it is in the student's IEP, we need to find a person that is able to do the services and who has the experience, who will do it well, and who will support our students. Because we want only the best for our students. I'm not asking you guys questions, as you can see. I'm just making some explanations to our board, to, um, some clarifications that I would like to make. Mrs. Phelps, you mentioned that you would rather a three-year contract. Oh, she left. Okay. Mr. Twig, you mentioned we have a guarantee, there's a guaranteed lawsuit. And, and that concerns me. We have contracts with different organizations for years. So that would mean every one of them would have a lawsuit. And that has not happened. So I have, I'm just a little concerned with that statement. And I know it was just being broad, and I appreciate that. But it was a little bit too broad. And then, Ms. Phelps, you had mentioned that you had done research and had experience with contracts for, that are five years. Can you share that research with us?
Sure, I can send it in email.
Send it, don't send it, if you can send it maybe to Dr. Meyer, I mean, sorry, Dr. Martin, and then he can forward it to us. That would be awesome, because I would like to see that. Because I've not heard that. We've been doing this. And if it was research-based and evidence-based, then I think more school divisions would be using a three-year contract versus a five-year contract. And I don't see that happening. But if there's, if there's research out there, I would like to see it. So thank you. But you too. Thank you very much. I know it was a lot of work to go through all of that. Thank you for your due diligence in, with, with the RFP and bringing us the six top candidates. Thank you.
Dr. Meyer?
One quick question, and Jamie Carter, welcome aboard. Quick question, RFP. Did not the RFP state five years, one year with a four-year renewable?
It did, yes, sir.
So that's in the RFP. We're not at liberty, I'm, I'm ask a question, making a statement. I don't think we're in the liberty?
We can't change it.
To change the rules in the middle of the game.
No, no, sir, we can't.
Thank you.
May I, or do you have a question?
I just wanted to make the statement that I didn't, I'm not quite understanding that assumption of contracts. I mean, in my business, I mean, if you, you win a contract, but we vote to renew every year. So we are perfectly available to, if we do not want to renew for the second year, then it's a one-year contract, and we don't ever use them again. So I'm not quite understanding the lawsuit claim, or that we're not fixed with this provider for five years. They are, it's tying the provider to agree, if we renew, to keep a continuity of services for our students so that we're not jumping around. And, and because they are a contractor, we, if we don't need their services, we don't need their services. We're not obligated to pay them each year. I mean, if we don't need it, we don't need it. But it is on our list to choose from per state laws for purchasing.
Yes, and it's determined by appropriation of funds each year.
Correct. And we don't have to appropriate the funds. It is not, it is, it is binding them to provide the services to us if we request it. It does not bind us to do anything for them. Correct. I was making sure I was understanding correctly, because it was missing, it was not relayed that way. Dr. Baker, did you have something?
I just wanted to, again, welcome Jamie onboard. It's her first trip to the podium. She's gotten to share quite a bit. But I wanted to go back, because I know we have several, or some additional requests for approval of the board. And so that maybe it doesn't have to come up again. I would like, and maybe this can be something that is brought up later, maybe in an informational piece to the board. But from the perspective of the RFP, because as you say, once we've, we've put out the RFP and we've stated that this is the, the one year with the four-year, four renewables, that we can't, you know, go in a different direction. But I would like, just for the future, I've always viewed it from the perspective, and I think Mr. Twig talked about, from a business perspective, but as well as just a customer service and a relationship that you want to have, especially with very important contracts, that it's more to our advantage to be able to maintain that continuity over a longer-than-three-year period. Because if we didn't, then we would every, at the minimum, every three years, then have to go back to putting it out to bid. But I think it would be helpful at some point to come back and say, are there advantages or disadvantages that you all can see in terms of when we develop RFPs for the future? Since we have two board members that have expressed some concern, I think it'd be good to be able to come back and say, well, here's what we see, and, you know, they have some research and some, some background with it. But I think it'd be good to just say, well, what, why do we continue to do that? And what are the advantages for us? I think we could continue to beat that to death over the next few requests. But I think it would be good that we continue it, knowing that folks may just feel how they feel right now, and that's understandable.
Sure.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, call for the question.
All those in favor of approving RFP number? I'm not reading the number. The previous motion. That was a lot of zeros. I was going to get tongue-tied. Thank you, Dr. Meyer. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yep.
Motion carries five to two.
Thank you.
On to fourteen point zero five, Approval of Security Camera Systems Contract.
It's me again. Good evening again. I'm going to go ahead and present the second item for award recommendations and contracting for the Security Camera Systems Project. And I do believe this was a CIP project, if I'm not mistaken, so we're good on that.
Yes.
All right. The school division issued a Request for Proposal, RFP, on December thirteenth, two thousand seventeen, for a turnkey acquisition, installation, and support of security camera systems for the entire school division. The procurement was advertised in the Freelance Star newspaper, posted on Eva, the state procurement website, as well as the school division's website. A pre-proposal conference was held on December twenty-second, two thousand seventeen. Fourteen proposals were received on January twenty-sixth, two thousand eighteen, eleven of which were deemed compliant to the required RFP criteria and thus evaluated. The proposals were reviewed and scored using the evaluation criteria outlined in the RFP. The proposal submitted by Johnson Controls Security Systems Solutions was deemed to be the most fully qualified and best suited among the proposals received. Therefore, the evaluation committee recommends that the school board award a one-year contract to Johnson Controls Security Solutions with an option to renew for four additional one-year contract terms. The total cost for the initial one-year period is six hundred eighty-nine thousand, two hundred eighty-eight dollars and seventy cents, which includes installation, training, one-year warranty, and all other costs associated with the project for all schools. At this time, Pete, John, or myself would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
I'll move the recommended action first.
And I'll second that motion.
Mr. Blaine moves to approve the recommended winner for the Security Camera Systems Contract. Dr. Meyer seconds. Discussion. Mrs. Phelps?
I have a couple of questions. Do the, do the cameras work in tandem with the VOIP? The, this set of cameras with the new?
They don't necessarily work in tandem. They're two separate systems.
Okay. And how many total cameras will be installed? Do you know?
Approximately seven hundred and seventy, seven hundred and sixty-eight.
And how many schools?
That's for, that's for every school and all, all buildings.
Are those going to replace the ones that are there?
Yes, ma'am.
And can you direct me to the, to the page in the CIP plan?
It's under the safety and security.
Oh, it is.
There isn't just something that specifically identifies cameras. It's just part of the safety and security.
And that's for, that's a million dollars?
This is for twenty, this is for twenty or ninety?
This is nineteen or twenty?
Well, the project actually will now be started in fiscal year nineteen, just because of how late we are in the year this year.
Okay.
Mr. Blaine?
I just want to be sure that I understand the motion. All, every one of the schools will get a new camera system, if I'm understanding correctly.
Yes, sir.
And it'll all be installed in the first year.
Yes, over the next year. We'll start schools.
Over the, over the period of the year.
Yes, sir.
What puzzles me is if the charge for installation and the equipment and so on, which is the fundamental reason for the motion, is six hundred thousand or whatever it is. Next year, second year, you're not going to be replacing thirty-one more cameras. What are they spending the money on? I'm assuming that this is going to be a level six hundred for five years, or?
No, not necessarily. This is just a sort of, it's a one-time expense to replace the system that we currently have.
This is one time, not over five.
And then as we move forward, if there's additional cameras and things that would need to be purchased or implemented in different schools, different locations in the buildings, then we would continue to use this company. Just sort of consistency of the system throughout.
But in the second year, you, we've guaranteed them this level income from that. No?
No, sir.
That can vary. Okay, that's, that's really the fundamental question.
Mr. Braswell?
I just have a couple of questions. First is the resolution on the cameras. The ones that we currently have now are very grainy. You can barely see with, you know, with them. What kind of improvement should we expect now with this new upgrade? And, and I know you can't give specifics, and please don't, because you'll blow me away. I just need a good mental picture of the type of resolution you think we're going to be able to have as a result of the upgrade.
Well, I'll take a stab at that, Mr. Braswell, being an amateur and a layperson in this. We do acknowledge that our, our cameras are old, they're ragged, and in many cases, don't, don't serve us well. And we've received that consistent feedback for a number of years. The, the original camera system was, was installed in two thousand four, two thousand five. Few of us have any electronic gear that's as old as our cameras are right now. So I think we definitely got our money's worth out of, out of this, this set. So the, the state of technology for security cameras has advanced way beyond what it was back in two thousand five. Where we've gone from analog to digital. So that in itself is going to provide a much more enhanced quality system for us. And the, the requirements that were embedded in the RFP were as a result of best practice and information that we got on what a quality camera system consists of and what the requirements ought to be for a system, whether you're looking inside a building, outside a building, at a parking lot, at a doorway. So we, all that was integrated in our, in our RFP. And this company did, did, did meet and exceed that, that requirement.
Okay. And the last question I had was on the equipment. Is what, is there a warranty on any of the equipment? And if so, can you elaborate?
Yes, on the parts and things, well, and there's different warranties. Let's say, so they'll be rewiring all of the current cameras. That warranty is twenty to twenty-five years on the wiring that will be behind it. On the actual cameras, I believe with this particular company, it was a three-year warranty for all of the parts. One year parts and service, which is, I think, a pretty standard. But the cameras, I believe, all had three-year warranties.
Mr. Twig?
Is that a hundred and eighty-seven for, per year times five, or is that total? The contract value?
No, that's just for the initial, that's the initial installation of replacing our current system.
Okay.
So it's a, that's a one-year cost.
Check. And to further explain, express my point, one of my points, cost of that stature, you may have no trouble. But you get into the millions of dollars, you're going to be protested ninety percent of the time. And what would we do as a board, or as any board? Ninety percent of the time, the board would wince and ca... would wince and cave? And what happens when you have those out years where you're responsible and liable for some of those out years if you do not take control? And if you do not, in turn, minimize the risk? And that's what it's all about. So, again, I want to applaud you for all of the upgrade proposals and for your due diligence and, and hard work toward maintaining these systems in, in good working order, and I, I thank you for that.
Just to clarify, again, this purchase is one time. It's not, not five years worth. It's worth replacing our cameras one time, FY nineteen.
Yes.
Got it. I just wanted to make sure that people were following. Mrs. Phelps?
I have a question. So, this is the one seventy-eight is for the one time, but then, or the six?
Six eighty-nine.
Six eighty-nine. And then that's the four-year, first year, and then it's also another four-year renewal?
Yes, it gives us the ability to renew the contract. So, if we wanted to come back in two years and say, we need additional cameras, we can use the same company, same equipment, same system, that will just integrate with what we currently have. So, it's a one-time, sort of six eighty-nine, takes care of the complete replacement of what we currently have. This, with the four years, it gives us time over the next four years if we decide to continue to grow and, and enhance our current system, that it, it gives us, like I said, the ability to still work with the same company at, at doing that as we, as we grow.
Or if there's like a renor, a renovation of a school during that time where they need to put cameras in it, then we'll, we'll be using that same system with that same company, so everything's consistent, it runs.
And we're locked into that price?
Yes, yes.
But if in the second year, you have no change from the first year, we're obligated, or we're contracting if we, if we agree?
No, the only thing we would have to pay at that point would be the second-year warranty. That's it. That's all we would be.
And that's gonna, every year, there's a different number's gonna be coming up, then?
Yes, each year, it's, with many things with technology, a lot of times, you buy the hardware the first year, and then you have a maintenance contract throughout. So, every year, whether it's to be upgrades to the software or firmware for the, the hardware itself, that's a sort of a standard process in most technology purchases. So, over the next three, four, five years, we'll have a, a regular maintenance up, or maintenance warranty that we pay for, that provides the updates and things like that to the software and, and, and the working systems.
Price to be arrived at every year?
I believe that was part, didn't they give us a warranty?
Warranty price?
The maintenance.
It's twenty, I think it's twenty-nine thousand.
Yeah, I believe it was approximately twenty-nine thousand. I couldn't give you the exact number off the top of my head, but they did, when we met with them, they did provide what the maintenance, the yearly maintenance was.
It's fine.
Madam Chair?
Dr. Meyer?
If I understand correctly, even with the systems, when we installed them back in two thousand four, two thousand five, as were we installing them and they came online, we had a one-year warranty, then after that went onto maintenance. So, as the systems were installed, then we followed through, and our annual maintenance depended on the number of systems that were installed. This is, this is absolutely no different in process or procedure.
Correct. We currently pay, pay a yearly maintenance for our current system that we have. This would just be a different company that's receiving it, and it replaces it.
Thank you. So, when is the planned installation for the cameras?
We're looking to get it started as quickly as we can after we have approval.
Okay. And once again, I'm sorry, how many cameras, again?
We currently have seven hundred and sixty-eight cameras, so this will replace seven hundred and sixty-eight cameras.
Okay. And this cost is the cameras, the installation, the wiring, everything that goes through, and then the warranty for them for one year, is what this cost is?
And the removal.
Oh, the, oh.
And the removal of the current camera system, that's up there.
Yeah. So, that's, that's a lot of work, and it's in, is it, it's our schools and our other facilities as well?
It, it is. Every, every school, which is all thirty-one schools, and we have a number of other sites like this building that also have security cameras, so it's, it's everywhere we currently have a security camera, those will be replaced by this company.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Braswell?
One real quick question. What impact will the installation of the security cameras have for Cortland?
That's actually one of the considerations that we took when we first started this. There probably, we'll have to work with, as the job itself is in phases, and parts of the schools are going to be completed prior to others, we're going to have to work both with the, probably the general contractor that's doing that job, and then the company that gets the RFP, to figure out what's the best route to do that transition. Some of them will be on the old system, and some may be on the new system. That one, we sort of don't know, and we, when we put the RFP, that's, we put sort of that caveat in there, that we have a school under renovation, and that may be the last school that we end up replacing, to keep the current system that we have, just so there is some consistency throughout that, that change.
So, what you're saying is that really depends on your implementation of the plan, not the contractor's contract and when, and when they're gonna perform that? They're not gonna mix old technology in, in Cortland, are they?
No, well, they'll get a new system, just like all the other schools.
So, it's just be implemented?
Yeah, just, we just figure out when is the best time to implement that.
Gotcha.
Yes, sir.
To follow up on that, one of the things that, that impressed us about this company was they came out very strongly with their willingness to, to work with us, get feedback from us as they phased through this program. So, I, I think their acknowledgement of, of the challenges of Cortland High School, as well as our needs and our thoughts on, on how to phase this system in, is, is very encouraging.
Ms. Shelley?
I'm sorry, I have one more comment. I'm looking at this, the cost of it. It's less than nine hundred dollars per camera. That includes everything, and they're digital, and it is for the safety of our students and our staff. And that's something I don't like putting a price tag on. So, on that, I think this is, this is definitely something we, we need. Thank you.
Mrs. Phelps?
I just wanted to ask, so this is capital improvement funds that are gonna fund the cameras. Am I correct? So, that's different money than instructional and operating? Okay. So, the five-year, is it standard best practices for the four-year renewal on something like this? I mean, it is safety and security, so is, in your experience?
I would say yes.
With the four-year renewal?
Yeah, I would, I would say yes. I mean, currently, the system we've had is about twelve or thirteen years old. It's the same system that we've been using for that.
Mr. Secari, can I rephrase what Ms. Phelps is asking a different way? Are there any perceived advantages, perceived or actual advantages, to having a shorter renewable cycle and going back out to RFP, which we probably wouldn't do anyway? But is there any perceived benefit in this particular case to less than four years renewable?
I'm, in my opinion, I don't know procurement, does that?
I, I don't think so. Johnson Controls Security Solutions also has an NJPA contract out, so this pricing is actually lower than what they're offering on their nation contract. So, I, I don't think there would be any benefit to that, no.
All those in favor of approving the security camera systems contract?
I have one more question.
Ms. Phelps?
I just, I didn't finish. I just have one more question. So, the, so the, the, the cost for this system is pretty reasonable because we give the four-year option, renewable option, or no?
No.
Okay.
The cost, the cost is so reasonable because there is a current cooperative contract out nationally.
Okay.
That's why.
Gotcha.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
All those in favor of approving the security camera system?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Post.
Motion carries five to two. On to fourteen point zero six, second reading approval of revision to policy JC, school attendance areas and revisions to regulation JC dash R, student transfer regulations for considering approval of requests. Mr. Upperco.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. That's quite a mouthful, isn't it? Thank you, board members, Dr. Baker, Dr. Martin. Revisions to school board policy JC, school attendance area and school board regulation JC dash R, student transfer regulations for considering approval request have been made and presented for board consideration, discussion, and second reading approval this evening. The staff recommendation would be that the school board approve the proposed revision to school board policy JC, and also to school board regulation JC dash R. Any questions?
I would like, I would like to make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
I will second.
I was just gonna say the whole thing.
Yes.
JC and JCR.
Sorry, I'll second.
Motion by Ms. Shelley to approve a second reading approval of revision to policy JC and JCR, second by Mrs. Phelps. Any discussion? Mr. Braswell?
Quickly, I, I appreciate the, the new, the second reading and the new policy. It gives the administration more flexibility to deal with these particular issues, especially as we are trying to add capacity to Cortland, and, you know, always in the looming future is the possibility of redistricting. What I, so, is a dirty word?
We can't say that. We wanna continue to be here.
I didn't mean to cuss on television. But what I, I'd like to see in some way, and I don't know if this is a separate action or if this is a part of this policy, is to have possibly two board members be on a committee to be able to lean forward on some of those tough issues so that we can be in a position to re, so that we're not reactive and we're proactive.
I'm, I'm gonna go ahead and take that one, Mr. Upperco, and if you wanna expand, sure, you may, you may have something to expand. I think that there's, there's two things in consideration. The, the main portion of this policy that we're wanting the board to, to approve is, is a, a committee structure that is continuously in place, and that one might not have, because that might be a body that is making recommendations to the board, that body might not have specific board representation. However, I think it's probably been previous practice and would definitely be future practice that when a particular area is being looked at for redistricting or rezoning, that there be particularly board representation from that particular area to help weigh in on the process and, and to provide insight into it, and I, I think we would definitely make sure that that is, is a part of the future.
All those in favor of approving the second reading?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you very much. And Madam Chair, at this time, I'd like to invite Phil Traer, our Director of Finance, to the podium.
Mr. Traer is there, and you're giving us food operations management services contract award recommendation.
Sorry, I was on a roll. I apologize. The division's current food service management contract ends on June thirtieth, two thousand eighteen. As a result, the purchasing department released a request for a proposal on January the twenty-ninth, two thousand and eighteen, after receiving approval from the Virginia Department of In addition, a committee of seven individuals from the division's food service task force was formed to evaluate and score the RFPs, as well as make a recommendation to the school board. The evaluation committee, with guidance from the purchasing department, performed its due diligence by evaluating the proposals based on the criteria outlined in the RFP. The procurement was advertised on EVA, Virginia State E Procurement website, and on the school division's purchasing website. Three bids were received on March the fifth, two thousand and eighteen, that were deemed responsive to the RFP from the following organizations: the Nutrition Group, Sodexo, Aramark. The administration would recommend that the school board award Sodexo a one-year contract beginning July first, two thousand and eighteen, through June thirty, two thousand and nineteen, as the division's third-party contracted food service, or food management services vendor. The contract may be renewed for four additional one-year contract terms upon approval from the Department of Education. The estimated cost would be five hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars, well, five hundred and fifty-eight thousand and eight dollars, and at this time, I would certainly be welcome to entertain any questions, or Mr. Traer as well.
Madam Chair, first, before we begin discussion, I'd like to make a recommendation to accept the recommendation from staff to award the, on a one-year contract, renewable for four additional years, beginning July first, two thousand and eighteen, for our food service management with Sodexo.
Motion by Dr. Meyer to approve Sodexo as the recommended food service provider, second by Mr. Braswell. Any discussion? Mr. Twig?
Well, we've thrown words out, I've thrown words out this evening, such as control, efficiencies, leadership or lack thereof, compromise, wincing, good slash bad business, and ultimately, risk. And here we go. Same story as the last two precedents from earlier this evening. If we relinquish control, the only other identity left to take control is the contractor, and it's bad business to give that contractor the leverage when we can maintain it by cutting our contract length down from five to anything less, preferably two or three.
Yeah, now, there's-
And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Couple ways to think about it. We have the option to go forward with Sodexo for up to five years if we choose to. We can go with Sodexo for one year if we choose to. We literally can non-renew because the sky is blue.
Yes, we can.
There, there is, there is nothing-
But not without consequence.
There is nothing that's gonna prevent this board from going to procurement and saying that we need to re-procure. There is a rather lengthy process in getting a food service RFP approved. It was vetted through our attorney, and it was vetted through VDOE ahead of time before the RFP was even submitted. And likewise, VDOE had to approve it once the final determination was, was made. I see the, the risk as minimal if the board was to choose to not proceed after a year or two. Quite minimal, because the, the advantage is with the board, not with the contractor, so.
And let experience rain the day, and let me just say one more thing I thought of, if I may, please, and I'll yield the floor. I do applaud Sodexo and thank them for everything that they've done. Service is good, and I have enjoyed working with them, and at six one, may you continue to provide that expert service, and I'll be around to support you. Thank you.
Mr. Braswell?
I want to commend the selection of Sodexo. I'm sure they met the criteria that was presented before them in a competitive way, but I also wanna commend them for their partnership with the school division in a myriad of different events and activities. They're always present, and we can count on them. And I also thank them for their partnership in terms of reaching out to our children with intellectual disabilities. They do a tremendous job of-
disabilities. Uh, they do a tremendous job of, uh, bringing them in the fold and offer them employment opportunities. Uh, something that we, uh, shouldn't take for granted as a School Division, uh, for their, uh, charity, uh, if you will, uh, with the School Division in partnership with us and making our students the very best, uh, and giving them the very best opportunities, uh, that are available. So I will be supporting, uh, this, uh, uh, motion, and I do appreciate the great work that Sedexo has done thus far and their great partnership with us in a variety of other, uh, activities. Thank you.
Mrs. Phelps.
I have a couple of questions. Um, I appreciate you guys coming up here and doing this. I know it's not easy, but it seems like it's the practice, the four-year redoable contract, and we know, we discussed that already. So, um, can you tell me how long Sedexo has been, um, our food operations service company? Do you know?
Yeah, they've been here five years. This is the end of their fifth year. The-
This is the end of the fifth year?
Yes.
And, um, do you know how many accounts are in the arrears through Sedexo? Like, who, how many student accounts are?
How many, how many are-
How, how?
How many are getting lunch, or?
Yeah, how many, how much-
Ms. Shelley has that report earlier. She has that number. She gave it in her Board Committee reports.
Oh, in her Board Committee reports. Okay, do you, can you tell me the approximate, how much is owed? I thought you just said the student number.
I don't have the number of how much is owed, I don't think. I have the number of students that are, um, that have negative account balances, but I do not have the amount of owed to the county.
Thanks. And, um-
I, I can tell you that the participation rate has consistently increased. Um, I don't have the number with me.
I do.
The Food Service Task Force every quarter does look at those, uh, numbers, and, uh, that's one of the reasons that I think we have a Food Service Task Force, to be honest with you. Um, so we, we have been pleased in the increase in students that are now buying both lunch and breakfast. Um, and there have been some, uh, new wrinkles, if you will, new ways of delivering breakfast, such as grab-and-go, second chance breakfast, that, uh, we have found Sedexo to be very responsive to, to wanting to work with us on that. And as our free and reduced lunch population continues to go up a little bit every year, that becomes even more important. So.
So how is the, um, source selection committee selected, or, I guess it's called Evaluation Committee?
Yeah. The, uh, RFP Evaluation Committee was comprised of members of the Food Service Task Force. Um, the Food Service Task Force has been in existence, I want to say, at least ten years, even when we had a prior vendor. Um, and the purpose of it is to continue to monitor the, uh, delivery of nutritious food and how to improve on that as we can. The committee itself, the Food Service Task Force Committee, is actually comprised of, it's, um, it's by design comprised to incorporate stakeholders. For example, there are two School Board Members, which both Mr. Twig and Mr., uh, Mrs. Shelley, sorry, are on that. Uh, we have a community member. We have two principals from each level, two high school, two middle school, um, and two elementary school principals, and that's on the large task force itself. Um, we also have Mrs. Gaines, our CFO, and we have Linda McGee, who is our food expert, if you will. She's our supervisor, who is our employee. She ensures that, um, commodities are, are done correctly, and that the free and reduced lunch statistics and out, out, uh, what did I want to say? Uh, outlay to the, uh, those potentially eligible gets done correctly. And by law, that has to be a Division employee. So that gives you an example of who's on the task force itself. On the RFP Committee, we didn't include the whole task force. We did include two parents. We did include one principal at every level. We did include Mrs. Gaines. Uh, we did include Mrs. McGee. We did include me. And then Mr. Traer was our facilitator. He did not have a vote, but he did facilitate the operations. Mrs. Carter was not yet with us at the beginning of the process, and then she came onboard at the end of the process. So that, that's how we did our-
So-
How we did it.
Is it a true statement to say that, um, a winner in a recent competition that was sponsored by Sedexo was a family member of the Food Service Evaluation Committee that's recommending us to approve contract?
There was a member of, a family member of one of the, uh, task force members who did participate and receive, uh, one of the awards in the Future Chef Competition for fifth graders, I believe.
Was that the, um, the, uh, the Evaluation Committee or the Source Selection Committee?
Was that-
Was that food community, Food Service Task Force Community Member on the selection committee?
No, but the person was on there as a parent.
But were they on the selection committee?
They were on a, yes, they were.
That's recommending? Oh, okay.
Yes, they were.
All right.
But they were on there as a parent, not as a former Board Member.
Right on. Thank you. That's it. Thanks.
Mr. Blaine.
I've had an opportunity to attend a number of occasions when we've been benefiting from the work of the, of Sedexo. And one of the things that has impressed me, very frankly, is the, uh, personal interest that the folks seem to demonstrate as they're out working, delivering food and preparation and so on. I have frankly been very, very impressed in, in a variety of, variety of different types of performances, and they have come out very well. Uh, I'm speaking with parents in general. Uh, I have had only good response about Sedexo. And one of the nice things is, we haven't even had to charge these, the representatives to stay at, during our meeting tonight. We've allowed them to stay here until the very end with no extra charge. So I thought that would be a nice compliment to them, don't you?
In a few minutes, I, before we sat down, I was gonna introduce, uh, the Regional Sales Manager, Mr. Higley, who did sit through the whole meeting and also was here last Monday, as well as, you know, Keith Nocko, who's our, who's our director here. So if it's okay with you to do that, I just asked him to stand for a minute.
Thank you for coming, gentlemen.
Thank you. I may be out of order, but I, I thought it was important.
All those in favor? Ms. Shelley.
I apologize. Um, I just wanted to mention that you had said that the RFP had to go to the VDOE before we could even put it out on EVA and all the procurement websites and such.
True.
So, what I don't know if, if, because many of these Board Members were not here five years ago when we had to, when we put out the last RFP. We did not think we were gonna get that RFP back from the state in time, those of you who are here remember this, we did not think we were gonna get that RFP back from the state in time to be able to put it out, to be able to get a bid for whomever was going to win the bid, to, um, start summer school lunches. That's how tight it was. And, um, that, I think, is another reason that we have longer con, that we have an option for longer contracts. Remember, there are one contract, one year with an option of being longer. Um, every year having to do that with the state would be tiresome, and, um, I think it would be also more difficult to get, we only had three bids. So I think it would be even more difficult to get bids if we had a shorter, um, timeframe for our contracts, one year with four renewal years of possible renewal. Not a guarantee renewal for years, but if, if somebody, you know, to come in and if it was, you know, a new vendor was coming in and with the chance of leaving in two years, three years, um, with that already known because of the length of the contract, we might have more trouble getting, um, vendors to put in a, um, even a bid package, or put in their bid package. So, um, that's something else I wanted to, to bring up. And then also, the, um, meal counts, April, these are just April, April of twenty seventeen, we had, I'm just rounding, sixty-four thousand breakfasts served, purchased. April of twenty eighteen, eighty-five, almost eighty-six thousand. So almost over twenty thousand more breakfasts served in April, from April seventeen to April eighteen. Lunch, a hundred fifty-eight thousand in twenty seventeen, a hundred ninety-seven thousand in twenty eighteen. So, um, our students are purchasing lunch. They're purchasing breakfast. They like the food. Um, so I just think that's something else to, to, um, give kudos to our, um, the, our current food service provider, who has, um, we will be voting on again tonight because they have, um, had the most favorable bid. So I just wanted to bring that up.
Dr. Meyer.
I made the motion for Sedexo to be approved for a five-year contract. I think I'm one of the few Board Members that's been through the process three different times. Uh, twice with a former vendor, and both of those were five-year terms. It's a very, very extensive process, and for us to, at that time, to make the shift to a contracted service was kind of taboo with VDOE. Uh, I think that that sentiment has changed considerably because of the performance that has been shown. Uh, back at that time, we were taking about a half million dollars a year out of the instructional budget to fund and pay for food service costs. And since we went with contracted services, we've gotten out of that mode entirely. And five years ago, when we made the decision to go with Sedexo, it was for us to be able to continue. And Sedexo has demonstrated clearly that they have exceeded in the expectation, not only in our participation numbers, but even in our fund balance, which even now food service is picking up the cost of our maintenance, electricity, water, those costs which before were being picked up by maintenance, now it's being picked up by food service. So the, our maintenance costs are being picked up appropriately by the food service program because it is, should be a self-sufficient fund. Likewise, it has built up a capital reserve, which we had talked about all along, so that we could replace equipment as needed. They have done that. Also has been able to pick up cafeteria monitors, paying for that through food service, not through the other instructional budget or any other budget. So all those things have been accomplished over these last five years, not to say the product offerings and working with very competent and qualified staff. So I made the motion because I am totally committed to the process that we went through, having been through it three different times, and I've seen the work that, and what they have accomplished, the numbers that have been shared. So I made the motion based on the experience and, and the testament that they have given to a program. The assertion that we're at risk, we're not at risk in any way, shape, or form. We maintain control of the whole operation. In no way do we give up control. In no way. And even that it is on a year-by-year, has to come back to this Board for approval, the Board retains control year by year. If the Board has a, a vote by majority that this program needs to end and we need to contract out with someone else or do it ourselves, that's a decision by this Board. But I, for one Board Member, am totally satisfied with the performance and, and made that motion for that very reason. With that, I share the floor. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mrs. Phelps.
I was asking the amount owed by the students that are in arrears for this food service, for the simple fact that I do know, I've been contacted by many people from different schools who have donated on your donations list for, to take care of the accounts that are not paid in the food service. So that's where it wasn't, I'm not questioning the number amount of meals. I'm not questioning Sedexo's operation. Uh, I, what I'm asking was for the figures of outside, even my neighbors and, and people in the community got together en masses to take care of the debt for student meals. So that's why I asked for the figures. It wasn't the numbers. That's the only reason why I asked for the figures, because the community is giving back to our schools and our children, and that's why I asked. That's it.
We'll get that number for you.
Ms. Shelley.
Um, Ms. Phelps, I understand your question, your concern. That is not Sedexo. The, that is not them. That is, that is our, um, that is our debt. That is not Sedexo's debt. Sedexo charges us this amount of money. We pay, and then with the money that our students are putting in for lunch, our reimbursements from, um, the, from, for the free and reduced lunch students, we are paying for, uh, the food that is served. Um, so any arrears that is there, that is us, that is on us as a School Division. That is not Sedexo at all. That is our, that is our debt, not theirs.
All those in favor approving Sedexo?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion, yeah, I don't know why they don't say name, but-
Thank you very much.
Motion carries five to two. On to fourteen point zero eight, Mrs. Gaines and Ms. Richardson, would you join us for approval of Budget Amendment Number Nine, two thousand and eighteen, Category Budget Transfer from Instruction to Attendance and Health for Students with Disabilities?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, based on the presentations that you've received this evening, um, it's evident that we're seeing a steady rise in our special aid population. Um, when you look at occupational therapy, physical therapy, and school psychology, we currently do have the funds in our instruction program, but we do need a categorical transfer. So that is what staff is recommending tonight, a three hundred thousand dollar transfer from instruction to administration, attendance, and health.
I will move the recommended action.
Mr. Blaine moves to approve Budget Amendment Number Nine.
Second.
It's a second by Ms. Phelps. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. On to fourteen point zero nine, Mrs. Gaines and Mr. Zik, oh, oh, I thought you guys were not done yet.
Mr. Pete Zakari.
Yes, Mr. Zakari, I thought you guys weren't done yet. Uh, Budget Number, Number Ten.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, basically, what you have before you is basically a federal grant, E-Rate Funds. The purpose of these funds is to ensure that schools have high-speed internet. Based on that, we're requesting appropriation. The amount is two hundred fifty-eight thousand, three hundred and sixty-seven dollars. This has already been approved by the County Finance Committee. If you were to approve it this evening, it would then go to the Board of Supervisors on June the twelfth for appropriation.
Motion by Ms. Shelley to approve Budget Amendment Number Ten.
I will second this.
Second, Mr. Blaine. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Thank you, Mrs. Gaines and Mr. Zakari. That brings us to item fifteen point zero one, Board Member Comments. Ms. Shelley.
Thank you. Um, I just wanted, two weeks ago was Teacher Appreciation Week, and I just wanted to say how much I know we all appreciate our teachers, but not just our teachers, all of our staff. Um, everybody, um, is in, um, a part of our students' education. So I just want everyone to know how much we truly appreciate, um, all of you, or each of you, as something I saw the other day. And, um, it is SOL time. Please tell your children and not to stress. Uh, just go in there with knowing, hey, I'm gonna do my best, and it's just another day, and I have to take this thing. Um, y'all know that I'm not a fan. Um, but we're, I'm gonna do my best, and that's what, that's all. No stress. That's it. Just gonna go in, and we're gonna do our best. That's all I ask. Um, just no stress for the kids. Um, graduation is coming up in a couple of weeks, so I just want to in va, in advance of graduation, congratulate the class of twenty eighteen. Um, you guys made it, and we are thrilled and can't wait to see you cross that stage, um, because it's, it's just right around the corner. And then I do want to mention something. We've had, um, members of the community come up here and talk a little bit about bullying and say that there's a problem. and say that there's a problem. What I would like from the community is, first of all, no one has contacted me. My email address is on the website. It's dshelley@spotsylvania.k12.v a.us. Contact me, too. Coming up here, that's great. I appreciate that. But if you want to talk to somebody, I will happily talk. Don't contact me on Facebook because I don't see that regularly, but I do see my, immediately things come to my phone. So contact me there. But here's my, this is my, what I'm going to ask, is come to us with solutions. If, if people are not happy with what is happening in our schools, bring solutions, bring us solutions. I mean, I know some of our solutions are more mental health providers. Well, we're going to add some more social workers to our budget, I mean, to our, to our staff next year. It's been approved in our budget. We need more, something else. And we've had people complain because we are bringing in new, 60 new hires next year, or 60 new positions next year. Something that would be very helpful are smaller class sizes, but that's going to be more teachers, because the class sizes mean teachers. And that is salaries, so that would be expensive. But teachers can be more in tune to what's going on with students and their behavior if there's fewer students in the classroom. So that's something else that we can look at. And then at home, parents, please watch the videos games that your student, your children are playing. What videos are they watching on YouTube? Keep an eye on your children as well. I know we do, but sometimes we might miss out. But those violent video games are not helpful. So that's something else that we, we can do. But those are some of my suggestions. So parents, if you have suggestions about how to, bring us the suggestions as well. If you've got concerns, I appreciate that, and we want to help you, but bring us some suggestions as well. That's it for tonight. Thanks.
Dr. Meyer.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just briefly, congratulations to all our students for their accomplishments, as we've seen this evening and last Monday. Congratulations to our graduates and parents and teachers for a successful year, and congratulations to our retirees. I see one retiree that's still sitting out there, Sarah Reed and Kathy Jones, who will be leaving us at the end of this school year. Thank you for your service. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Ms. Phelps.
I just wanted to let everybody know, the Secretary of Department of Education sent out an email about a month ago and with some suggestions on how, as a school board member, to be involved with your schools. And so I took him up on one of his suggestions, and that was to call at least three schools in your community and go volunteer on Teacher Appreciation Week. So that's what I did. And, and it was a great experience. I contacted three schools, and only two of the schools were, were, had the openings or welcomed me with open arms, and that was Parkside Elementary School and Mastoponics High School. And if I tell you, it was an invaluable experience, that's an understatement, and, and I would definitely, I'm going to definitely continue to do that, and I would encourage my fellow school board members, since I'm the only one with children in the schools, Spotsylvania Public Schools right now, today, that sits on this board, I would just encourage my peers on the school board to reach out and volunteer at the schools. And the staff and the administration at those schools were genuinely respectful of me, and I'm very grateful to them, each and every one of them. It was just a great day. And I also wanted to thank Peggy and Sandy from the Parent Resource Center. They were here at the last meeting, and that was another diamond-in-the-rough staff that was, is invaluable to me and to a lot of other people in the community. And I do need to say, I have a solution for my no votes on the four-year renewals, and that would be as a school board members get together and discuss, consider looking at other viable options as far as the renewables on the contracts. It just seems like tonight was a four-year renewable, four-year renewable. And so it's not that, well, that was just my solution for that. And also, I do, I'm going to end with this, you know, I'm looking forward to graduations that are coming up and the celebrations, and there is one, actually, one thing that I'm disappointed and that the, our schools use resources and the school employees that were on accounting time for a project outside of Spotsy schools. And I'm a big advocate for our, our teachers to have the supplies that they need. So it was concerning to me, and it still is, and I think, you know, $50 or $10 in employee compensation or materials and supplies to build a project off-site with our employees. It just, I'm disappointed by that, and I'll just leave it at that. But thank you, everybody, and that's it. That's all I got. Thanks.
Mr. Braswell. Mr. Twig.
No comment from the chair. On to 16.01, unfinished business. Anybody have any unfinished business? Move on to 16.02. As I announced earlier, Mr. Benton contacted me this morning to confirm they, they would like to have a joint meeting on May 29th, the Holbert Milling at 6:30 PM. I just need a motion to change our calendar.
I make a motion to change the calendar after Chair Turman's asked that we have a joint meeting.
Motion by Mr. Braswell to make the modification. Second by Dr. Meyer.
Question, or is there going to be like a, an agenda of?
The next step, I am meeting with Chairman Benton, and we are going to discuss an agenda this time because our lack, last work session, we did not have one.
Thank you. That was my question, so you answered it.
I announced 6:30.
Ms. Shaw.
At our last meeting with the Board of Supervisors, a couple people, one was not there and one left. Will all of them be there this time?
Five have confirmed.
Okay, thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All those in favor?
Aye.